Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the meeting chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves it. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the meeting chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the meeting chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the meeting chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the meeting chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the meeting chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committees concerned and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no indication of any queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you. Mrs Hay?
Like Mrs Hay's having problems, I'll take the minute.
Jason, I think I'm here now.
You are.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'll just take over, thanks, sorry. Convener?
At present.
Councillor Alexander?
I'm here.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell?
Present.
Councillor Cordell?
Present.
Councillor Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor Flynn?
Here.
Councillor Lynn?
I'm here.
Councillor Randall?
I'm here.
Bailey Roberts?
I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
Present.
Councillor Ross?
I'm here.
Bailey Sawyers?
I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Here.
Councillor McCready?
Present.
Councillor McIrvin? Councillor McIrvin?
He is present, I heard them.
Councillor McIrvin indicated that he was joining as a guest this evening due to an issue with his iPad.
Thanks, Roger. Councillor Mara?
Present.
Councillor Richardson?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey Scott?
I'm here.
Councillor Hay?
Present.
Councillor Scott?
I'm here.
Bailey MacPherson?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
We've had apologies from the Lord Provost. Councillor Murray?
I'm here.
Miss Mans?
Present.
We've had apologies from Miss Leck. Mr Chohan? Mr Chohan? I'll mark him as absent. Mr Baxter?
Good evening.
Miss Barclay?
I'm here.
Miss Radke? Miss Radke? Mark is absent. Mr Anderson McGuinness? Miss Ishack?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Arlene, didn't read out my name. Councillor Malone.
Sorry, much present, thanks.
Can't believe you're that easily forgotten, Charlie, to be honest. Okay, Arlene, can you move on to the start of the business, please?
Yep. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Can you don't see indications from anybody?
Item two, pupil representation on the Children and Family Services Committee. You have this for approval.
Okay, so this is, I am just introducing our new pupil rep, Miss Farma Ishack. So first of all, I want to say a welcome to you. Unfortunately, this has all been done virtually and we can't meet in person, which we normally give a chance to meet you properly, but welcome to the meeting anyway. We look forward to your participation and your contributions and as I always said, feel free just to chip in with your thoughts and your comments whenever you want to, but it's a warm welcome from all of us to the committee and I hope you enjoy your time on the committee. Okay, Arlene.
Item three, Ravey Academy, Craigie High School and Craigie Barnes Primary School, outcome of the formal consultation process.
Okay, I won't give this a major introduction, obviously, this is something we've been discussing for quite a while now and I'll just really open up now for questions or comments and I think the first person I see is Councillor Crookshank.
Thank you, convener. Aside from the reservations of the Labour Group detailed in an email to officers, if I may, I would like to make comment on the report and the consultation process. Okay? And I welcome 4.5 of the report, which states, hang on, let me get there, which states that they'll extend the established educational partnership with Dundee and Angus College, Mitchelham Skill Centre, Innovation Park and the Dundee Schools Musical Theatre and the instrument music opportunities available in the city. Then I'd like to want, I'd like to welcome the proposed enhanced sensory support and enhanced support areas to support a diverse range of young people's needs, including autism, deafness and visual impairment, as outlined in 1.39 to 1.311, as outlined in the consultation report. I was also impressed with the engagement of young people in the consultation process for the breadth of questions they asked and the responses from officers, where I was less impressed with the staff engagement, where only one staff member turned up to one of the consultation meetings. However, I would like to commend the officers for the efforts in conducting the consultation in these times of COVID. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, Councillor Crookshank, for those remarks, that's very much appreciated. The next person I see on the list is Councillor Murray.
Thanks, convener. I just wanted a quite straightforward question. In the appendices, it says that the school, the building would be built to accommodate a school roll of up to 1,879, but that wasn't in the actual board that we were getting. Could I just ask officers if that's still the target size of school and if it changes, would that come back to committee? Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask Mr Clancy if he wants to start that once and pass it on to MD who thinks can answer.
Well, just thank you for the question, Councillor Murray. At this stage, we're obviously waiting on the report being approved and then there's a second process with Scottish Ministers we need to go through. Assuming all these approvals are received, we'll move into a design phase where the building will be designed based on feedback and consultation with various stakeholders. We obviously have got an idea that the footage and size of the building, because that allows us to have a price for the cost, but we are looking to construct a building that is around about that size. The reason for that is to give us sufficient headroom in the east of the city for further years in case there is expansion. So that would be the approximate size that we would be looking, but obviously the final final size will depend upon just how the design of the building shapes up, but that's an approximation based on the square footage.
Okay, Councillor Murray, you happy with that response or do you have a supplementary?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, thanks. As you know, convener, and as officers all know, my, I have reservations about building a school too small, but as long as we're aiming for something near enough, a replacement for the two buildings we have just now, I'm comfortable.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Rome, you're next on my list.
Thank you, convener. As a work councillor, I'd like to welcome the report. So for me, the investment of the new school, of the £20 million from the Scottish Government and this new school will result in better facilities for staff and for pupils and I don't think I can really put it much better than the appendix 1.313. A new school community learning campus within the east of Dundee will provide rich opportunities for citizens to engage in an extended range of cultural learning, leisure and sporting opportunities within the immediate community and include wide divergent youth work programmes. So I would hope that everyone would join with me in supporting this proposal, given the clear advantages and the largely positive responses from the consultation.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Rome. Again, as Councillor Crookshank, the comments are appreciated. Councillor Duncan, you're next on my list.
Thanks, convener. Just first, we'd broadly welcome this report, particularly the part about the Grove Academy catchment area being enlarged to include Craigie Barnes Primary School, which I know a number of residents in my ward think makes perfect sense. I suppose that given the amount of new houses being built in my ward in the ferry at the moment, how confident are officers that as time unfolds, that there's definitely going to be space in Grove Academy for all these extra pupils, particularly in the P1 categories?
Again, I'll pass over to Mr Clancy.
Thanks for the question, Councillor Duncan. I think the tables, and I'm hopeful that the report sets out, that we have projected capacity based on house building that we're aware of, that's in the House Land Register and the calculations we actually have for pupil population, particularly for the young people coming into S1, give us confidence that by August 27, even taking in all priority ones that are there and houses that are projected to be built, along with the Craigie Barnes, there's still spaces for 56 young people in S1 if you look at catchment. Now, the reality for Grove Academy is Grove Academy will always run at nearly full because it receives significant placing requests from other parts of the city. I don't anticipate that this will change if this report is approved tonight and any surplus places that there are will invariably be taken up by placing requests because that's been the past experience at the school. But I can certainly give you reassurance in terms of the capacity for catchment pupils, there is sufficient capacity within our projections right up to 2027.
Okay, thanks very much for that because, yeah, I mean, you're quite right that historically Grove has always oversubscribed, but my main concern was that, you know, there will be room for the pupils actually from its catchment area.
Okay, Councillor Duncan, I now pass over to Councillor Smith.
Thank you, convener. Firstly, I would just like to commend officers for the work that they have or their efforts in getting this consultation completed when it was interrupted by the pandemic. I'd also like to welcome the report along with the rest of my colleagues because I do see this as an opportunity for us to really enhance our learning states in various areas. I would be grateful if officers could perhaps expand a little bit on section 4.7 regarding the support for families and young people with additional support needs.
Again, I'll pass over to Mr Clancy.
Happy to ask Mrs May if she would like to come in and answer that question.
Thank you, convener, and thanks, Paul. Councillor Smith, yeah, we're looking at, when we get the opportunity to build something from scratch, then we get the opportunity to look at the latest developments in terms of a learning environment for children with additional support needs. So part of the excitement around a new building is to get that right in terms of what the latest research has allowed us to understand about what children need to have got barriers to the learning and indeed some of the complex needs that we know around the children who attend in this area with hearing and visual impairments. So we'll be able to create something special for those particular children, young people. We also are looking at, as you can see in the paper, there's that opportunity to build more than a school here. This is about a campus and there's a vision for more than a school and so other partners working in that building and in particular our links with Dundee and Angus College to enhance the opportunities that will be for the great work that's already going on with Kings Park children. So our senior phase in Kings Park are already getting great support through vocational learning with Dundee and Angus College and we see this building as an opportunity to expand that even further as well.
Okay, I don't see Councillor Smith coming for supplementary. With our basis, I'll then bring in Bailey Keenan.
Good. Convener, Councillor Crookshank spelled out earlier that we had written to officers because we had some concerns. I suppose it would be fair for us to advise what these were and that is really around, you know, are we making the right decision about, under the sort of COVID situation that we're in at the moment, looking towards a school at almost 1,900 pupils? And we're not looking to divide on that because we believe that there is an expectation built within the parents and peoples of the school that council was prepared to build them a new school, but we'll continue to have that offline discussion with officers about that. You know, we're in a pandemic, you know, most of our schools are not open at the moment and we're really, it's but unknown as to when we're out of that and when it's safe to have that number of peoples together. Well, my concern about the report and the question that we'd want asked is that of yourself, convener, is to, there is an additional £1 million worth of savings that need to be made so as that the capital financing costs are in place. Where do you envisage these savings coming from and do you see that being ring fenced within education or do you think there's a wider cast across other departments of council to meet that? But an early indication as to how the business plan's been met and how the administration see that would be useful to have.
Okay, I will come back in on a second, but I think certainly looking at the finance, it'd probably be best to ask Mr Flight if he's present or Mr Cogan, who is now chief exec, but still currently holds the finance at the moment, whether they want to respond first and then I'll come in after that.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to come in initially on that one. So in terms of the £60 million, as you'll be aware, it's really split three ways. £20 million is already in the council capital plan and has been fully accounted for. £20 million has been assumed to come in from the Scottish Government. In actual fact, they will give us revenue funding to borrow up to 50% of the project, depending on certain targets. So the £20 million we've assumed is a prudent assumption at this stage. In reality, it may be more towards £30 million, but we don't know that until we know the exact targets and have a review. So that's still prudent, but there is still possibility that'll move in our favour. The balance of £20 million is what has to be funded from revenue savings. Interest rates have improved slightly, so that projection of £1 million has reduced, so it's probably now £900,000 would probably fund that, that £20 million of borrowing. And in terms of the merger of two schools, obviously two schools operating as one school from one side does generate natural savings in itself. At its peak, we estimate that savings from operating one school rather than two schools is about £750,000. So just that natural saving from the merger covers quite a huge part of that saving. The revenue budget won't be needed until 25, 26 or 26, 27 and there'll be much more certainty then about what the exact figures are. So at this stage, we've probably not got firm plans as to how that remaining gap would be funded.
Okay, so obviously you asked the question for me as well. So as Mr Flight's indicated, there is still some movement that's potentially going to be in our favour. So at this moment in time, I don't think we are anticipating making any firm proposals of what that might look like until we get the final figure from the Scottish Government. And at that point, certainly that would come back to committee to make a final decision in the budget process. So at the moment, we don't anticipate bringing anything back in the near future about what that will look like and certainly we're hopeful, but as Mr Flight says, we need to be prudent. We've taken it as the £20 million, but we're certainly hopeful that it'll be more than that once we meet the criteria that's set out. So that's the position at the moment, but obviously anything that will change will drop back to committee and committee will make that final decision.
Convener, can I have a supplementary?
Of course.
The £750,000 then, would that be predominantly staff costs?
Again, I'll ask Mr Flight to answer that first and then I'll come back in.
I mean, it would be a combination of property cost and there would be some staff cost as well because obviously there'd be a slightly different staffing structure.
But that's something that obviously we would still work out, particularly working with our trade union college to get that finalized before we made a final decision on that as well.
So, convener, we're going to hear back as to how that £1 million will be funded at some stage then?
Absolutely, that'll be appropriate for the committee to make that decision at a future date. Next person I have is Mr Baxter.
Thank you, convener. It probably comes as no surprise that the question I have revolves around the teaching staff and sports staff within the school. I'm looking at page 10, section 3.11. I'm looking at the plan to bring both schools together before the new school is built. That takes time, that takes space. Looking at the projected roles of both the schools, they're going to be increasing as well and it seems quite clear that a recruitment exercise is going to have to happen at some point and our suggestion is that it happens now because really what I want to know is to bring both the schools together within that four-year period, what Dundee City Council are going to do to make sure that that workload is manageable for teaching staff and it happens within the 35-hour week?
Okay, again, I'll bring officers in in a second, but of course also Mr Baxter, you and I've had a discussion about staffing previously and I've always said to you that we're more than happy to have those discussions once we get past the stage of whether this is approved or not. So certainly happy to have those discussions once this is approved, but I'll ask officers to come in as well.
Happy for Mrs May if she wants to start and I'll make some comments after that.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, convener, and thanks to Mr Baxter for the question. Well, we're at the stage we're at just now and obviously we're hoping that this report will be approved and then we'll get into that kind of level of detail, which would be really a kind of high-level answer, David, but you know how closely we work with our teacher unions and so as soon as we're in a position where we set up our formal programme board moving forward around the governance of this project, once it's hopefully approved, then more than happy to continue to have the conversations we have on a regular basis to work together with our teacher unions to make sure we get the staffing standard right for the projected number of pupils and as always, we work in consultation with our teachers' unions and we'll continue to do so.
Maybe just add to that and say that Mr Baxter will be aware, the last exercise we carried out along these lines was the closure of Minas Hill and we did build into the staffing arrangements, transitional staffing and other opportunities to provide the time that's needed to actually do these tasks. I think we have in our favour, if this approval is, if this proposal is approved, time on our side here to actually try and bring the school together in lots of ways, in terms of vision, in terms of where they're going with the curriculum. And so there would be quite a long lead-in to get us to that point, but there's no doubt when physically the children and the staff start to come together in a new building, there's always some challenges that are there and we need to make sure that that's properly resourced to ensure that we get the very, very smoothest transition that we can in bringing the schools together, but that certainly would be allowed for and built in and we're happy to have these discussions with trade union colleagues in our schools, again, if the proposal's approved.
Mr Baxter, I'll allow you to come in for supplementing if you want.
No, that's great, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Next person I have is Bailey Scott.
Thanks, convener. It's just to say that I'm very supportive of these proposals because there's clearly huge advantages to having a, building a new community campus. I did have three concerns about it, so when I had a lengthy conversation with Mr Clancy, who very ably was able to reassure me on some of the issues. And the three main concerns I had were firstly, the loss of a secondary school in the east of the city, particularly with growing population and the amount of house building that's going on, especially in the north-east wards and the ferry ward. And while all the information that's available currently has been used to project what the school intakes might be in the future, it doesn't take account of any future land being released in a future local development plan. And my second concern I had was, as Kevin Keenan and others have said, it's about the prudential savings that have to be made, the million pounds have to be saved to fund the £20 million worth of borrowing. And my third concern was about the capacity in Grove Academy, as Councillor Duncan had mentioned, and whether this Grove Academy can cope with the intake and I was reassured that it is able to do that for a number of years ahead. And I think that's really worthwhile, having Craigie Barnes as an associated school now with Grove Academy, because as one of the local councillors, for years, every December, I would have umpteen people contacting me, asking how they go about making a placement request to get their child into Grove Academy. And these were people who lived a stone's throw away from their community school and some even living in the same street that the school's in. So very supportive of the proposals and as I say, I'm grateful to Mr Clancy for giving me assurances on the concerns that I had.
No, thank you for those comments, Bailey Scott. Again, as I said, I appreciate them, they're appreciated and certainly I'm, you know, I'm aware of the concerns regarding Grove and, you know, Councillor Smith and I set on a number of appeals during the summer and a lot of people do, who live in that area, want to go to Grove and, you know, they do sometimes live closer to the Grove than they do to Craigie High. So this will make a lot of sense for a lot of those people as well. So I'm just glad that we've been able to do that as well, but thank you for your comments. Next I have is Bailey Sawyers.
Thanks very much, convener. I'm very supportive of this report and I'm quite confident it's going to deliver better education for young people in the east of the city. There's already been mention of greater work with Dundee and Angus College and the Mitchelham Scotland Innovation Park. I wonder if Mr Clancy or Mrs May can maybe outline what kind of increased or enhanced opportunities there might be for young people working with these two organisations?
Okay, I'll pass over to Mr Clancy to start with. You're still on mute, Mr Clancy.
Sorry, I'm saying I'm happy for Mrs May to answer this question.
Thank you, everyone, convener, Bailey Sawyers. Yeah, so we're not at the stage yet and if our proposal is accepted and it goes forward, then we get in to start looking at what's the vision for this community campus and beyond that vision, that's when we start to look at designing a building, but the vision has to come first. And so it's that bit about what the curriculum could look like, you know, if you're working in a wider partnership. So we've already got over 900 young people that go along to Dundee and Angus College for part of their senior phase every week in Dundee, so we've already got a very well-established, excellent partnership there. But if we're building something from scratch, then we've got an opportunity to look at more opportunities for young people to stay in that building, but we work in an enhanced partnership with Dundee and Angus College to provide even more vocational opportunities. And that, of course, would be linked with the Mitchelham Skill Centre as well because we're looking at what's the curriculum meant to develop? It's meant to develop and give opportunities for all of our young people to develop the skills for learning.
Yeah, so we're not at the stage yet, and if our proposal is accepted and it goes forward, then we get in to start looking at what's the vision for this community campus. And beyond that vision, that's when we start to look at designing a building, but the vision has to come first. And so it's that bit about what the curriculum could look like, you know, if you're working in a wider partnership. So we've already got over nine hundred young people that go along to Dundee and Angus College for part of their senior phase every week in Dundee. So we've already got a very well established, excellent partnership there. But if we're building something from scratch, then we've got an opportunity to look at more opportunities for young people to stay in that building. But we work in an enhanced partnership with Dundee and Angus College to provide even more vocational opportunities. And that, of course, would be linked with the Mitchelins Skill Centre as well, because we're looking at what's the curriculum meant to develop. It's meant to develop and give opportunities for all of our young people to develop the skills for learning life and work. That's what Curriculum for Excellence was always about. But when we get an opportunity to build something from the outset, we get the opportunity to build in flexible spaces, enhance the digital offer by getting the wifi infrastructure ready first and bringing partners to use these flexible spaces. So it won't be your traditional classroom with the door closed. There'll be lots of much more innovative spaces designed with partners from Mitchelins, with partners from Dundee and Angus College, so we can have a breadth of opportunity for the young people to meet their needs. So it's an exciting opportunity for us to start again with a design of a building, but built on a vision of giving greater choice to the young people who come through its doors.
Can maybe just add one other thing to follow on from what Mrs. May's actually said. And I would focus on the young people with multiple and complex needs, where we have our actual strongest links, I would say, in the city with Dundee and Angus College. And often these young people will actually follow on from our settings into Dundee and Angus College for further work when they've actually left school. And Dundee and Angus College are really interested in developing that transition and working with our health and social care partners, looking at the transition into adult life for post eighteen's. So there's significant opportunities as well as providing that kind of transition and arrangements and tightening that up and extending the opportunities that we have for children with multiple and complex needs.
Okay. So next person I have is the Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you, Convenor, and apologies. My wife is the secretary of Craigie Barnes Primary and I divisionally thought it was far detached on declaring interest, but having heard the Premier so mentioned quite a few times, just to be on the safe side, can I declare that as an interest, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
No problem, okay. Was it just a declaration you had, Deputy Lord Provost, yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, so I've only got councillor Flynn indicated he had a question, but now indicated that he doesn't have a question. So I'm going to take councillor Mara as the last question before we wrap this item up. So councillor Mara.
Thanks, Convenor. I want to echo some of Bailey Keenan's concerns that the Labour Group have regarding the long term sustainability of this kind of approach. I think that whereas, you know, I certainly had concerns about this kind of approach eighteen months ago. I would say it's fair to say that I have more concerns about it now. It doesn't feel necessary to me that this is sensitive to a pandemic world, bringing together ever larger groups of kids into one place, taking away the resilience in our school system. So as Bailey Keenan indicated, you know, we're not for dividing on this because we think there is an expectation as represented in the responses to the consultation, that a new building will be forthcoming. But we do have concerns about it. So that's something that we want to continue to engage with officers about, so that we're not building in problems for the future, because it does strike me that this looks like a plan for yesterday that might not be fit for tomorrow. So I would say around that, and I have a question I would come to if that's okay, Convenor. I mean, quite clearly, this is the only game in town. You know, the Scottish Government, the Futures Trust have put in place a process where you only are awarded capital if you merge schools and build ever bigger buildings. You know, that seems to me to be a kind of a process of efficiency rather than education. So and it's, you know, one of our absent committee members tonight, a former head teacher, and has told our committee before about merging schools, that her recommendation to the director of education when she demitted office was, she was responsible for merging two high schools and she said, my advice would be never do it again because it's replete with challenges, cultural, resource wise, and we know that we're going to have that ahead. And I don't think it's been a wholly positive experience for the west of the city. And we're just going to continue dealing with some of those problems in the coming months in terms of the problems in Member Gowry and other places when the disastrous closure of Minas Hill is meant for the city. So I think there's challenges ahead in making this work. But the one assurance that I was going to ask for, if that's okay, Convenor, we've heard about natural savings in the seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds. Can we ask for assurances that that won't include loss of teaching staff? So I'm particularly concerned that these don't become efficiency factories. We don't result in ever bigger class sizes and see this as an opportunity just to grow classes and shrink the teaching population. So maybe an assurance from you, Convenor, just that we can maintain the level of teaching staff we have and that we won't be losing teachers and face to face contact for our kids in that seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds.
Okay, there's several things I think we need to unpack there. So first of all, as you are obviously aware, councillor Mara, there's a limit on how many kids you can have in practical classes. So we couldn't go above that, even if we wanted to, which we don't. And there's a limit on how many children we have in classes due to agreements that we have with the trade unions nationally. So of course we can't go above that. So obviously, I think as most members would already been aware of that. I'll make a quick comment about merging schools. You know, I have experience of as a parent of having both my children go to a primary school that was the result of two merged schools in the city. And I think the experience of my children and all of their peers is that that worked really well and really benefited them in the campus that they were in in primary. So I don't think we should just straight away just presume that merger is bad based on one school or another. I think there's experiences across the city that are reasonably positive. So certainly I can give you the reassurances that you've asked for, but I don't know if Mr. Clancy has anything you want to add.
Just to thank councillor Mara for his comments and be very happy to engage with the Labour Group on any discussions they want to have about school sizes. Just a couple of comments to say, I think everybody in Dundee is desperate for kids to get back into buildings with teachers. And there's absolutely no doubt that we've learned a lot about using IT, but the best way to educate young people is in schools with teachers. And that's what we're really working towards achieving. The second thing I would say is that this building and this project, if it's approved tonight, will be a project that is facing forward and will be very forward thinking. And it sets out in the paper quite clearly what these important partnerships are, including it being completely community facing and designed so that it'll interface and be a real community building. And I'm hoping it'll be the first truly community school in the sense of its design that we actually have in the city. And we've got a tremendous opportunity to do something here in the east of the city that will benefit the young people and the communities. And there are buildings and schools of this size all over Scotland. And in my time in education, we've had Harris Academy that's been over fourteen hundred. When I was at school, we had Battle Dragon that was at fourteen hundred. So it's certainly not unusual to have a school of this size. And just to be clear, although we're actually looking at a capacity for this building at eighteen seven nine, we anticipate that the role will settle at under fifteen hundred. So I would say that it's a future looking building without any question. It's a future looking project and I believe it will be for the very best for the young people and the families and communities that east of Dundee.
Okay, councillor Mara, will you supplement?
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks for your own experiences that you related there. I know that there's many people who are members, who have had family, family members and other members that they represent as councillors, who have had different experiences of mergers. There are different challenges in different places, that's absolutely the case. And I'm sure some have gone smoother than others. Absolutely take your point on that. But all of my point in that was saying that there are lessons we have to learn from those experiences absolutely, absolutely clearly. And I'm sure the officers will endeavour to do that. I mean, I wanted to pick up on the director's point there regarding getting kids back to school. The Labour Group is in absolute agreement with that, you know, the best place for kids to learn is in school. There's no doubt about that. And we want to see that when it's safe to get kids back in there. What we were talking about was it's very difficult to know what the longer term future looks like. Now, we're hearing headlines about living in a pandemic world where we have to deal with the virus in different forms for years to come potentially. And we have to think about the resilience in our estate. It's not just about getting the kids back in, it's making sure that those kids are safe, that if classrooms or different parts of the school have to be closed, as they have been in recent months, that we have to make sure that we've got options about how we do that. So we've got legitimate concerns, I would say, about doing ever bigger schools and taking the resilience out of that process. So we look forward to those conversations and engaging on them. So thank you, Convenor.
Okay, no, thank you for your question. As I said earlier, councillor Mara will be the last question I was going to allow. So just move to the formal stage to move for approval. And I just want to put on record my thanks to the officers for the work that they've done on this. This is certainly was difficult for periods due to the pandemic. It didn't go the way that we anticipated right at the start and had to make some delays. And unfortunately, that's meant that it's taken longer to bring this report back to committee than we initially anticipated. Also want to thank everybody who engaged in this process, from staff to pupils to parents to members of the community. All comments, whether they were positive or negative, were appreciated and has helped to shape the report you have in front of us and moving forward will help us shape the building as we deliver it. I think it's also worth remembering that the reason why we started all this is the significant fire at Brave View. And for a number of our young people, and obviously at the moment they're not at school for obvious reasons, but when they do come back to school, will still be in temporary accommodation because the building isn't fit for purpose. And I think that's something that we need to recognise as we make this decision, that this has been a long process for them as they find out what is going to happen to their school. And I think it's important that we recognise that tonight. But with those comments, I move approval of this report. Does anybody feel otherwise minded? Certainly don't see an indication for that, so that report's been agreed. Okay, Mr. Baxter's indicating he's abstaining from the vote and that's appreciated, as is Miss Barclay. That's appreciated, thank you for that. Okay, but with that, that report's agreed. Okay, Arlene?
Item four, cost of the school day initiative update. You have a report before you.
Again, this is, I think, a very positive report, but Bailey McPherson, I see you have the first person to come in, so I'll allow you in.
Thank you very much, Convenor. I just really got a question about funding, the sort of things that we're trying to achieve that are sort of alluded to in four point nine, you know, breakfasts, school trips, let's hope we're able to do school trips in the not too distant future, obviously somewhat on hold at the moment. Now, in appendix one, which is the cost of the school day document, it does mention funding a few times. And if I go to page seventy of the substantive page numbering page eleven of that particular report, it talks about PEF, People Equity Fund, and also alludes to accessing external funding sources. And there are various references throughout about the cost of the school day funding sources paper. And I'm just really wanting some clarity from Mr. Clancy or Mrs. May in relation to what sort of additional funding sources over and above People Equity Fund are effectively being offered to schools to actually achieve what we want to get as satisfactory outcomes. I think we're all very conscious of the fact that people equity funding is very helpful, but schools, naturally enough, spend a significant amount of that on, for example, improving learning, you know, writing and reading skills, for example. And my concern is that frankly, the money can't be spent two and three times. And there will be a limit to the amount of PEF funding, PEF obviously varying by school depending on the level that schools require. So my question is really in relation to the, what's the detail of the external funding sources and how successful has application to external funding sources actually been?
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Clancy if he wants to answer that or pass it over to Mrs. May.
Happy, happy for Mrs. May to start and I'm happy to comment after that.
Thank you, thank you, Convenor, and thanks Bailey McPherson. Apologies, I was struggling between my screens just now, trying to see the page numbers you were on. It's such a big document just now, so I've not got it right in front of me. But I do know that, you know, remember, this is part of our Scottish attainment challenge work. That's where we engage with the Child Poverty Action Group and we did the research around what was needed in Dundee in order to alleviate some of that poverty around the cost of the school day. So there's funding from our central pot, we pay for that money through our attainment challenge fund and we've put in resources through staff to support children and young people in schools as part of the schools' individual action plans around what they want to do as part of the school day. So there are monies there. We also work closely with our corporate teams in terms of making sure that everyone has their welfare rights and the benefits rights that they're entitled to too. So that's a different aspect to the funding. But for most of the additional things that schools want to do, they will use their PEF because they think this is part, again, that wider issue around this is part of Scottish attainment challenge and this is part of what they want to do in order to deliver on that alleviating poverty as part of the cost of school day. So a lot of it is around PEF, but it's also about partners that schools work with. Dundee Burns have been an amazing partner in this and a lot of you will know about the great work of Dundee Burns and Food Funds and during the lockdown and beyond into recovery, a lot of our schools have shifted this work around food and around clothing as we've moved into the winter months as well. We did, we did think that maybe by the time we go through this, the rest of this session, it would be good to bring you back a further report actually looking at how it shifted some of the work as a result of lockdown. Because as you rightly say, Bailey McPherson, we're not going on school trips and things just now. So people have diverted some of the resource just now to meet the need and there's been an awful lot of support for warm clothing in our schools over the last few months. So I hope that's answered, I think, some of it. Without seeing the pages, I apologise. I'll go back and try.
Maybe, maybe just add it, maybe just add a couple of points to help and support what Mrs. May said, that schools are very innovative in seeking out funding opportunities. There's many work with third sector partners who apply for external funding for particular projects. The local, I mean, I don't want to mention loads of people in particular, but the local football clubs have been really good at offering support. Sometimes it's money, sometimes it could have been, well, one time it was tickets for football games. Sometimes it's in kind support. Some of our secondaries were going down to local clubs to do a bit of hospitality. So there's the local football clubs, but there's many other organisations. Local businesses, schools have got really strong contacts with local businesses and many local shops provide bread and other accessories that would be used for breakfast clubs or informal breakfast clubs, for example. So schools have made their own connections over the years and they know how to dig deep round about them. And you'd be amazed at the kind of number of angles that they actually come at this. But that paper itself helps to bring together different agencies that may be able to help them in bids for different pots of funding.
Yeah, I'm very grateful, these were comprehensive responses and I'm grateful for that. And we obviously want to see complete success here. We want all our young people to have an equal chance and no young person to miss out. I noticed that the report alludes to a cost of the school day action plan, plans that schools are producing. I presume these are monitors so that if, for example, a school felt that something wasn't being achieved with the speed with which they would wish to see it achieved, that if you like, the Children and Family Service centrally can step in and assist. Because at the end of the day, I presume these action plans are to highlight success, which is great, but also anything that is outstanding.
Again, I'll pass it over to Mrs. May or Mr. Clancy?
Yeah, I'll join you go.
Yeah, thank you again, Bailey McPherson. Absolutely, my team of officers and managers, we take, you know, a quality assurance approach to all the plans in our schools. That's where our accountability sits to ensure that, you know, we're all facing the same direction and delivering on something that's agreed as a city priority. So yeah, we would have the overviews that we're not marking their daughters. I wouldn't want you to think it was like that, but we do actually accept all of their plans into our central resource so we can have an overview. And if there are gaps, we would go back to schools and offer support or just check in and check out what's needed to support the plans at school level.
Sorry, sorry, Paul.
No, I was just going to add one thing to say that one of the big efforts that we've made through this whole cost of school day initiative is to bring about cultural change in schools. And the way that that happens is by getting the message down to every single member of staff so that they're conscious of poverty and the impact that that can actually have on young people. And so in how they organise the classes, how they organise visits, experiences, how they do that as a whole school, that becomes essential in that kind of cultural change. And I think that's why it's important that each school has its own plan to reflect that kind of discussion that's going on at school level amongst class teachers and amongst managers about what the key principles are to ensure that we get the fairest opportunity for all young people. So yeah, it's to do with resource, but it's also to do with how you plan the curriculum, how you plan the experiences and that you just don't take things for granted. And I think we've been really successful in working with our schools and trying to bring about that cultural change, although we'd have to say, I think our teachers were already very conscious of aspects of poverty and what that actually did to children's learning. But it's certainly been helpful to do that right across the board in a focused way.
Very helpful indeed, I'm grateful for these responses. I completely concur, just looking at, you know, parent council meetings in my own local area, which of course have continued to despite Covid, albeit virtually. But you can see that, you know, teaching staff, head teachers, et cetera, are really putting effort into this. And it's good to see the progress that's being made. So I'm grateful to Paul and to Audrey for the responses.
No, thank you for that. But look, personally, I think actually, as you said, the ending is a really valid point as well, is that the work that our schools do, and it's not just about school, but it's actual individual staff members, whether it's head teachers, whether it's staff, support staff, office staff, some of the things that they do, and some of the things I've heard about, to help young people who are in poverty is astounding and amazing. I think actually this is the appropriate time to actually just recognise the work that those staff do, and it really is very much appreciated, especially in the times that we're currently living in. I think that really has been something that's been really appreciated by so many people. Now, because of short, you indicated you had a question, and you said it's been answered. So I am just going to take it. I'm not going to let you in. And on that basis, can this report be agreed? And I think if you're nodding there, because you've been nodding that, so yeah, that report's been agreed. Okay, Arlene?
Thank you. Item five, T-Side Plan for Children, Young People and Families. You have a report before you.
Okay, again, it's a pretty comprehensive report. I'm not planning to say too much towards it. Just checking to see if MD has any questions or any comments they wish to make. Councilor Kirkshank?
Thank you, Convena. I note that there's a sum of five, 547 K in here. Now, going back to when the plan was first approved, there was no financial cost. Now we have 547 K, that's been a grant allocation from the government, and it states the five areas. But it doesn't tell how much has been spent on each area, or how much our allocation is, because obviously it's the three council allocation. So I'd like a bit more information on that, please.
Yeah, no problem. Mr Clancy, who are you going to pass it to? So you still haven't yet?
Sorry, I do answer some of them. I'm going to pass this one, I'm going to pass this one to Mr Lloyd.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Convena. And thank you, Councilor Kirkshank, for the question. And yes, just to confirm, that is additional Scottish government funding over and above the various different funding streams already receive. And broadly speaking, it is split six ways. So the first part goes towards central management, infrastructure and support, with a number of posts in place to support the work across the region, including, for instance, work on the learning estate transformation, relevance there being the first report we've heard tonight. And 30% of the funding, in fact, goes towards central management, infrastructure and support. And then the rest is divided between the five priority groups, with the most of that at 22% going towards the attainment group, and the least at 7% going towards the group which is doing work on inequalities, including in relation to care experienced children and people. And to give some examples of that, some concrete examples, in priority group one, some of the funding has gone to a welfare rights officer, training, leadership development events. In priority group two, some of the funding has gone towards improvement posts, including the work that Audrey was describing a moment ago around self-evaluation and school improvement. In priority group three, some of the funding has gone towards parenting coordinator and contributed towards part funding of a child healthy weight coordinator. In priority group four, the funding has gone towards management costs associated with the regional review of respite. And lastly, in priority group five, the group focusing on child protection and safeguarding, the funding has mostly gone towards research on significant case reviews carried out by an associate professor in child protection from a local university. So it's been split across the collaborative, and it all benefits Dundee. And as you can see from the content of the report, it's GAFEC compliant. It addresses child's needs holistically, not just in terms of schooling, but also in relation to mental health, disabilities, the separate needs of care experienced children and people, young carers, et cetera.
Okay, Councilor Kirkshank, I'll allow you to come back in.
Thank you. Would it be helpful, Glenn, if, if members could have a briefing on this so that we knew exactly how much money is being spent on which areas? And, you know, so we can do the benefit analysis?
I certainly have no problem with that. Three officers are nodding towards that as well. So that's not a problem. We'll get something arranged to have those discussions. Okay. With that, I see no other comments. So can this report be agreed? Okay, I do see MD indicating otherwise. So that report's been agreed. And I think that's the business for children families. Okay.
Thank you, Convena. The next committee is the City Development Committee.
The first item on the agenda is declaration of interest. Does any of member wish to declare an interest?
Hey, Mrs Deffy Lopramis, can I declare an interest for the Finty Primary School? My daughter's a primary teacher there.
And can I declare an interest on item nine, please? Just to say that I'm a lifelong member of Dundee Civic Trust. That's Dunlop Castle item.
Can I declare an interest on item three? As I'm the Chair of Tactran, and I might mention Tactran when I'm speaking to item three.
Thank you. That being the case.
Can I, sorry, Councilor Mara, can I declare an interest as well on one of the private items, item 17? I'm an employer of the University of Dundee. Thank you.
Okay. We now move on to report a request for a deputation has been received in respect of item eight, Finty Primary School Part Time Prohibition of Driving. Do you agree to hear the deputation?
Have you really disagreed? Or have you weren't quite happy?
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay, thank you. Can just move on to the deputation then, please? Hello, Simon.
Hello. Yep. Can everyone hear?
Yep. Welcome. You've got seven minutes, and I'll tell you, if you do go towards seven minutes, I'll give you a warning just before. Would you like to start when ready?
Yep. Thank you for, everyone for listening in to this. I'll be as brief as possible regarding the main points. First of all, obviously, I'd just like to raise a quick point that communication on this hasn't been great as a public body, as a community council, that even for tonight's hearing, that we could actually attend and do a deputation, I kindly found that out through the local press rather than the council itself, which obviously is a bit disappointing. But I'm sure we can answer that. On the main deputation points regarding it, we, obviously, this was done a long time ago, pre-Covid. Everyone had gone off the table for many months, if not over a year. It's come back on the table. And obviously, due to the fact that our community council, we weren't able to have meetings, we felt the new consultation period was very quick. We asked for an extension for the comment to be allowed back because we didn't feel the consultation was adequate enough. I mean, the boards that were put up, there was taken, there was off the lamppost within one day on my walk around the local area. And the main points that I can see going back to this, we did a letter drop box in the local area. And as I can see from background, report on 4.2, that there was. Sorry about that.
Sorry, Simon, watch it there.
Sorry about that. Technical issues, sorry about that. The background on 4.2 and responses, there was five responses received, four objections and one of support. We feel that if we was given the extra time to actually gather more public responses to this, that there would have been a lot more objections to the ongoing issues. The main point that we see from the objections and from the questions we have that haven't been answered, we feel they will not be able to get their children to other schools during these periods. There are concern over the ability to get to and from general appointments outside the area if they don't drive and aren't a resident because non, non-school taxis or delivery drivers will not be allowed in. Concerns around delivery drivers being allowed in, obviously, food items, a lot of people shielding. I know this could, we're hopefully going to be Covid away over the month, but we don't know how long this is going to be lasting. I've had family question that they have family visiting and they're a blue disabled badge holder and can't understand why they'll be exempt, why they're not be exempt. We don't, we have finmill staff and school staff that because the times have been extended, that they'll have to get in a lot earlier, otherwise they'll have to park outside somewhere and then walk up, which may potentially make them late and disrupt the local library and finmill centre services. I've had a comment from a local resident explaining that they feel blue badge holders should be allowed access to the old, the area. Some parents rely on older family members to drop off and pick up children from school because they're working. And, you know, with the Covid situation, I don't think anyone can turn down any work at any time. They have a blue badge, so they have less mobility to walk for distances. And we shouldn't be punishing people with disabilities. Therefore, we feel there needs to be a lot more clarity, a lot more conscious. The local people asking how the permits would work, would it be one per household? Also, residents are asking, it initially says that it will be free for the permit, but does this mean that there'll be a cost in the future? We, as a community council, are asking, we support traffic development, we support community, we want to make it safer. We just feel there's going to be a massive displacement of traffic onto the main roads that are already struggling with the, with the, with the crossing patrolers being able to cross the road with the volume of traffic. And really, we're going into this with a lot of questions unanswered, you know. I think we need to take a wee step back and just get, extend the period that we could have got more public speaking regarding this. And also, we need to look at the questions that local people have come back with and answer them before we agree to it. You know, Police Scotland have limited resources, we've been told. And also, point four two. I'm saying residents will not be able to receive deliveries during these times after paid for items, you know. A lot of these delivery companies, they say it's delivered between eight and six. You don't get a chance to tell them when to deliver it. And in these times, what do we say to people? As a community council, we support broadly the traffic calming measures, we support the 20 mile an hour permanent zone, but we just feel that this is going ahead. And there's a lot more questions than answers that have come back regarding this. And obviously, in our interest as a public body, we just feel it's been a lack of organisation and lack of clarity. And it's been disappointing the way we feel we've been treated as a body regarding this. I thank you for your time on this. I hope the local, obviously, our local members will come in on this matter, the three local members that we have on board on this call, and also anyone that has any questions we'll ask, and we can have a constructive discussion.
Okay, thank you very much, Simon. I think I'll just finish you. Thank you. Perfect timing. Appreciate that. Any members have any questions for the deputation? I don't see any questions. So thank you very much, Simon. Can we just move on, Arlene, to the report?
Okay, so that's item eight, Finty Primary School Part Time Prohibition of Driving. You are asked to approve the report.
Thank you. This report, just as it says, just provides a summary of what's happening with regards to the proposal around Finty Primary School, and the committee's asked to decide whether to proceed in making the order. It's been a bit of IT issues tonight, so it'll be quite slow. So Gregor, Kevin, Paulie. What, Councilor Murray, please?
I don't know if you want to let the questions and comments in first, Convena, because I've got an amendment. So I don't want to go into the formal, but.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Councilor. I'll just move on. Councilor Keenan?
Convena, I wonder if an officer could perhaps make a comment or make a few comments in response to the deputation in relation to some of the issues that have been raised about deliveries and disabled people getting access, you know, and of course, perhaps spell out that, you know, the consultation to make this happen was, you know, met with all legal commitments or legal requirements, you know, here that there was posters up for a day that were taken down. So perhaps officers want to make a comment on that. You know, I haven't really got an issue about trying to make things safer around schools. But, you know, I obviously look towards community councils and trying to keep them on board and take them with them. And in this case, it appears that the community council there feels like they're hard done by and forgotten about.
Thank you for that. I'll pass it on to, I think Ewan McNaughton is on the call, I hope. Ewan, you there?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. Just a couple of the points, the consultation first. This is the second consultation that's been, this is the formal consultation as part of the traffic order. As reported in the committee report came previously on the 9th of March 2020, there was a consultation previously undertaken, which did also include the, the community council, that similarly recorded objection to the proposal. Again, as detailed in the reports before you tonight, this also details the points of objection towards the proposal. So I think that we've gathered the points of objection, and we've reported that for your consideration. Purpose of the report tonight is to consider the objections and also the benefits of the scheme and decide on whether or not to make it. In terms of the the blue badge holders, delivery drivers and so forth, the scheme was designed in conjunction with, in liaison with Police Scotland through consultation, fairly extensive consultation. Police Scotland asked for a number of things. One was consistency in how we release these schemes going forward. And the other thing was to minimise the number of exceptions, which is why it was kept to a minimum of just residents. I do take on board the points about blue badge holders particularly. The problem with the exemptions is that the more vehicles you let in, the less effective the scheme is. And that's the reason why Police Scotland opted to design it in the way it is.
Thank you for that. Councilor Keenan, you want to come back? Are you happy with that? So you're.
I'm free there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilor Shires?
Hi, Convena. Just to ask officers to confirm that there was absolutely no intention to bring in any charging for this scheme, to charge local residents.
Got you back on there again, Ewan?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. There's no intentions at the moment to bring in charges. In terms of future, it's probably more likely to go the other way and remove the permits, depending on how successful the scheme is.
Yeah, thank you for that. Right. Okay, thank you. Councilor Rome?
Thank you, Convena. I did have a question for officers, but it's largely been answered regarding consultation. So just a comment now, which is just to remind committee about the times that are being proposed for this, 8.30am to 9.15am. Now, it was a very cogent deputation from Simon, and I thank you for it. I know that obviously there are some concerns regarding this, but it is quite a limited time window. And in terms of staff getting to school, I would imagine the majority of teachers would be in before that time in order to be in plenty of time for, for classes and so on. So I think this is quite a fair proposal, and I accept there are concerns about it. But as Mr McNaughton already touched upon, the more exemptions that are brought in at this point, the less effective it will be. So I was contacted by a constituent regarding requesting an exemption. But as I said to the leading question, the problem being the more exemptions you bring in, it becomes unenforceable. And so I think this is a fair proposal, and I look forward to being accepted by committee.
Thank you for that, Councilor Rome. What, Billy Scott?
My question's already been dealt with, Convena. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I just saw that in the chat. Thank you for that. Billy McPherson?
Thanks, Convena. My question is really for Mr McNaughton, and it's really around if committee is minded to accept this tonight. Now, I, I think, you know, those of us that are on the, the working party about safety at schools, understand the issues that have brought this and potentially other schemes going forward, um, and forward. And, and, and obviously, um, the safety of pupils is, is, is paramount. Matched obviously with, you know, I, I hear the, the very eloquent comments Mr Redman gave about the concerns around this. And so given that, um, what is the sort of review process? What will officers be doing if, assuming that we accept this tonight? Will there be an opportunity for um the Sustainable Transport um Roads Team to look at this uh in terms of how well it's working and perhaps report back to committee on that? So that we are satisfied if we actually approve this, that um, that there will be a sort of review process in relation to the success or otherwise of it?
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Mr McNaughton, would you like to come back on that?
Yes, thank, thank you, convener. Thank you, Bailey McPherson. The um, the proposal as part of the wider um school streets uh initiative is to report back um biannually on um the progress would be from this or identify from um the findings from Police Scotland enforcement or um compliance. Um, and also success as well in terms of um uh what the uptake or decrease on the driving school is. So yeah, we'll report back through that process.
Okay, thank you.
That's nice and reassuring. Tha- tha- thanks for that, Mr McNaughton.
Thank you. I, I've got one more question. Well, I don't know what happened there, sorry. Feedback from somebody. One more question, but I don't know who it is, because somebody. I think it might be. Councillor McCarvin. Okay, thank you. Councillor McCarvin, could?
Chair, do you hear me?
Lot of feedback there, George.
Apologies, Chair, I'm, I'm, I'm zooming in on my personal machine and I'm, I'm talking on my phone, so apologies.
I'll switch off.
I've, I've, I've put myself on mute on one of them. Um, just a question for Mr McNaughton, because in four point two on page twenty one, it mentions uh the concerns about limited resources, about enforcement of the scheme. So probably the question for Mr McNaughton is the consistency of enforcement. Now, I would imagine short term, there will be enforcement measures put in place. But moving forward, are we confident that there's going to be a consistency in enforcement? And is it going to be for uh our own staff, Police Scotland or a combination of both?
Thank you. Uh, Mr McNaughton, you come back now, please?
Yeah, thank you, convener. The uh, the enforcement will lie with Police Scotland, um part of the consultation. Police Scotland um did, did review the uh, the enforcement requirements and Police Scotland support this. Um, we are expecting it to be successful and that's based on um the findings of previous trials which have been undertaken elsewhere um throughout Scotland. Um, and we do envisage it will be self-enforcing.
Okay, so we're confident. And I, I asked the question because I look at the coal side campus and the issues and the convener will be more than aware of issues with parking around the area. And there has been difficulty in the past uh getting Police Scotland to, to put in enforcement and, and to be in attendance um to deal with these things. So are, are we very confident that this will, Police Scotland will be involved moving forward? Yeah.
Again, Ewan, do you want to come back?
Yep, thank you. Yes, we have close liaison with Police Scotland. Um, again, uh, the school policing situation being one of them, so uh we'll try to work with them to report back, share information and prioritize the resource that they do have towards problem locations as well.
Okay, I look forward to that. Thank you very much for that. Uh, councillor Murray, I see your motion.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Um, I'm generally in, in favour of, of the um safer school streets traffic management. I'll, I'll not be moving against item seven, but uh I, I really feel like this area is not the right area for it. Um, so I, I'd like to move that um we note the consultation but take no further action. Um, I really don't think that this area is the right area, as I say. Um, it doesn't just impact on, on the school, which is also the aim, but it also impacts on the community centre and the high bridge, share the same public space. Um, and I think the, the area is just not the right, it's not the right solution for, for that area. I think the general idea is grand and I think it works in other areas, other areas in my world, other areas in other worlds. But I just, I don't feel like the community council's questions have been answered at all. I don't feel like any other solution was actively considered properly. So yeah, I'd like to move that we note the consultation and take no further action.
Okay, thank you for that. Do you have a second though? Just wait a few seconds. I don't see a second there, councillor Murray, so I think that fails. Sorry about that. So can we just move on to the report? Aline, is this going to take this report as agreed?
Agreed.
Take that, I take silence as agreed. Thank you very much. Can you move on, please?
That takes us on to item two on the agenda, installation of a pedestrian refuge on Johnston Avenue. This was placed on the agenda at the request of Bailey Wright.
Uh, Bailey Wright?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Uh, after a discussion with officers, I've decided to withdraw this item at this time. Uh, they have agreed to do a full assessment of the safety problems at the end of Johnson Avenue uh that links with the mini roundabout at the junction of Strathmore Avenue. That junction is really quite dangerous, especially if you're a wheelchair user or if you're using a frame or even a stick. People who walk slow can't get across the road uh you know, very easily at that point, but also people with prams and buggies. So I want to thank the officers agreeing to look again with fresh eyes at this junction. And I look forward to a report being brought forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Bailey Wright, and thank you to the officers for discussing with you prior to this and finding a solution. Uh, can we move on? Aline, please?
That takes us on to item three, the future bus services in Dundee. This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of councillor McCready.
Councillor McCready, would you like to speak on it, please?
Yeah, thank you very much, convener. Um, I have a motion which I'm happy to be shared and I would have uh slight uh technical issues earlier in the day, I may have shared it wider than I have done already, but apologies for that. Um, um, so if officers can share it, um that would be helpful. If they have it.
Thank you for that. I think it's, it's been sent to everyone's email address. It's been put up. So we'll just, if you want to speak to it, as well.
Thanks, thanks very much, convener. I mean, I think, I mean, I'll just speak very briefly to the, to the motion that I've put forward. I think, I think first and foremost, I want to thank those people who work in the bus industry in our city, who have kept buses running over the last few months. I think it's really important that they've performed a very important public service at a time when it was needed. Um, we've clapped for key workers and we should say thanks to those key workers who've kept buses going. I think that thanks should be, it should include making sure that they're properly rewarded for their efforts and indeed I think we should have an level of concern um at uh some suggestion that there may be uh job losses in the bus industry in the city. But I think we also need to recognise that buses are the main mode of public transport in this city. If we're going to promote modal shift, if we're going to promote the economy of the city, we need to use the, the policy around buses to make that happen. I think that's really important. I've often raised my concerns in committee um about air quality. Uh, we can promote uh good air quality by ensuring that we have a modern bus fleet operating in the city. At the moment, that means the council working with bus operators, the Scottish government and others to ensure that buses in Dundee are as modern as they can be and as clean as they can be in terms of air quality in particular. I think, you know, all of us, I'm sure, are serious about the uh low emission zone making a real difference in the city. And we need to make sure that the bus fleet in the city is contributing to improving air quality by having buses with the lowest emissions possible. We should be looking at Dundee playing a leading role in electric buses and indeed also looking at the possibility of hydrogen buses. I think it's really important that we look at new ways and new technologies and I hope that that's something that the city can be at the heart of and at the, at the forefront of. I think during, in some ways, the main point of the, of, 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 of the motion is during the pandemic, the public health message from uh both Scottish and UK governments and indeed from the council has rightly been about only to use public transport when it's essential. I think once the pandemic is over and I think we all hope that that's sooner rather than later, although I think we're very aware of the difficult times that we face. We need a concerted effort to get people back on buses and to encourage modal shift. If we're serious about the climate emergency, then we need to promote bus use. But the service needs to be there to make it easy for people to use the bus. We need to look at the council's ongoing support for the sector and look at how we can help to promote buses in the city. And we need to examine the money that is being spent on subsidised bus routes and look to ensure that it's being used to provide the best service possible. We need also to look at the potential powers given to the council by the recent Transport Act and look at how we could do things differently to promote buses in our city and make sure there is a service which meets the needs of the people of our city. I think essentially, I'm unconvinced that allowing the market to decide which bus routes continue and which ones are cut is the way forward. I think, you know, I think we've seen that the market doesn't necessarily provide uh all the answers. And I think uh if we're serious about encouraging modal shift, we need a bus service fit for the twenty first century. A service, I think, I don't think anybody would have said, if we'd had this discussion in uh January or even March of last year, that anybody would have said that before the impact of COVID nineteen, that the bus service for the city was the, was, was the absolute best service it could be. And I think we should be looking for a better service for the citizens of Dundee that gives them real opportunities to choose and makes uh modal shift uh to buses and to public transport in particular, um an easy option. I also want to note uh McGill's recent takeover of Explore. I think it will be interesting to see what they do and uh what they are like in their services to the city. And I think we should look forward to working with them um and, and also with Stagecoach and other providers uh to provide a reliable, environmentally friendly uh service that contributes to the economy of the city and contributes to the, the improving the environment of the city. So hopefully, essentially, I want to look at um making sure that uh, that, that we have a campaign, a national campaign that says that we should be promoting the use of buses once the pandemic is over. I think we should also look at making sure that as a council, we know that we are using the, the monies that we have, the limited resource that we have to support subsidised bus routes um to the best, the best of our ability to create the best uh service possible and to make up for the deficiencies in the, in the private sector. And also that we look at whether there are um new uh uh, uh, new powers that would come to the council from the Transport Act that would allow us to do things differently, that allow us to look at promoting buses. And I think, you know, we need to reflect on the fact that some, like, more than half the people in this city don't have access to a car, that buses are the main uh means of public transport in the city. And on that basis, convener, I hope you'll be able to support my motion and I move the, the motion which is in my name. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Uh, my apologies, Tracy. I'd be calling you Aline tonight, so my apologies for that beforehand. Uh, can we maybe take that down from the screen? No, I think we're too long enough to time to read it and it's also in our inboxes. Uh, I, I quite agree with most of, if not everything you've said there, councillor McCready. I think the recognition of the, what the transport team and within all the bus companies within the city and what you go through the city should be applauded, that they've been out there in the very difficult circumstances. And I'm sure they're actually uh recognised uh by their own company for what they're actually doing. Uh, I think the, what you're saying about the executive director writing to or writing a report, I absolutely agree with that. I have no problem with that at all. I think I would highlight the fact that the Scottish government have been supportive of the bus companies across Scotland, of the COVID support grant and supporting the National Concessionary Scheme and also the Bus Service Operator Grant based on previous year's figures to support the bus transport industry through this difficult time. And moving on to whether we look for a fair transition, there is actually a, a Sustainable Transport Transition Plan being issued uh which takes into account the green recovery and takes into account everything we need, as you just mentioned, the importance of using public transport and reducing emissions going forward. So yes, I'm quite happy to take that forward and move on and, and ask the executive director, as you said in the last paragraph, to come bring back a report. So if anybody, any question, can you have a second to change screens? Uh, councillor, so councillor Mara, please?
Yeah, thanks, convener. I'm glad to hear that you'll be back in uh councillor McCready's motion. Uh, I'll second him as uh on behalf of the Labour Group. Um, I think there's, there's real challenges um in the next phase coming out, as we all hope we will, out of the pandemic. Um, really about building confidence that the public have in our public transport network again. So they feel confident about taking the bus, about making use uh of buses and they can leave the car at home. Um, it, just as in many parts of life, uh we'll have to, going to have to make sure that we can deal with people's apprehensions about sitting alongside people, being close to people again um in the months to come, once the vaccines are put in place. And I know I'm sure that'll be a focus for um the Scottish government, uh but also for Dundee City Council and thinking about how we get our economy moving again and making sure that we can make some of the changes that are required. But I think having the unanimous support of, of all councillors, if that's what we're going to have, uh to make sure that we can uh build towards a position where we can encourage people and try and build their confidence in, in that, uh and encourage them to get back on the bus, uh to leave the cars at home. Um, to, and to make the, the kind of changes that we know that we need for another great crisis um in, in the, um, the, the climate crisis that's in front of us. So um with those comments, happy to support councillor McCready's uh motion.
No, thank you, councillor Mara. I appreciate your comments as well. I totally agree with them more forward. Uh, Bailey McPherson?
Uh, thanks, convener. And, and like yourself, uh, uh, have no issue whatsoever with the, the motion that councillor McCready's presented um tonight. I think we would all applaud the heroic efforts, frankly, of public transport workers during uh the, the pandemic who have managed to keep public transport in the city running uh in what have been the most challenging of circumstances. Um, I've had a look at the um, the, the power within the twenty nineteen act. And I'll be honest and say, I'll, I'll look forward to actually seeing what officers' view of it is. I have a concern, if I'm being frank about it, that um it, it, it slightly mirrors the theoretical wellbeing power that local authorities have in terms of section twenty of the, the two thousand and three Local Government Act, which is it's a theory, but we ain't going to be running, uh it's a theory, but you need to fund it. And um how, how often, for example, is the wellbeing power being used by local authorities for that reason? Um, it, 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 it's, it's a power that you could, you could use, you've got to find the funding to do so. And I think um really, to be blunt about, we ain't going to be running any uh, uh, a municipal bus service again in the very near future. And I think we would all accept the real reality of that. In terms of really practical things, however, we now have out to tender um the, the, the five proposed amended tended services. Uh, councillor Duncan and I have already given feedback to um, to the Sustainable Transport on um the routes insofar as they uh would affect um our wards, because we think there's a couple of tweaks in the case of both Broughty Ferry and, and the West End that would further assist which uh, uh communities that uh have no uh public transport link. My big concern, if I'm being frank about it, is um the five tender services plus the alter circle support and what we've got in the budget for twenty twenty one, twenty two, so we'll be very interested to see the budget volume. Uh, will we be able to afford all of these? And it's absolutely vital, I feel, that we do everything that we can, as councillor McCready alluded to, to ensure that we support um communities that otherwise do not have a bus service. So I'm very keen to ensure that we do all we can to support bus services for those communities, particularly for people who uh do not have access, as has been alluded to tonight, um to a, a private vehicle and are completely reliant on bus service, but may not be on a bus route. And therefore, for that reason, I would very much like to see the tendered services all being taken up um uh to ensure that we do what we can to minimise that um exclusion that's uh, you know, some people across our city have from nearby public transport. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I think there'll be a report coming in the near future with regards to the tendered services. I think the tenders just recently closed or will be closing shortly. Uh, so thank you very much. Uh, councillor Scott?
Yes, thank you, convener. Really just on behalf of the Conservative Group to say that we are happy to support councillor McCready's motion. I think we all want to get more people back on the buses and have more people after the COVID pandemic and be a lot more environmentally friendly going forward. I kind of agree with what Bailey um McPherson said though. Uh, we wouldn't really be in favour, I don't think, of bringing the buses back into council control, but we're quite happy to have a look at the report. But we're quite happy to have a look at the report that the Economic Development Team are going to bring back, just to see what it says. So happy to support the motion, as I say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else mean it? Nope. Any? Just hold on a second. Nope. Is that, can I tell you, is agreed? Thank you. Next, please, Tracy.
Kate, that now takes us to item four, suspension of parking charges. This is for information and record purposes.
Just an agenda note in response to the Scottish government's announcement of level four restrictions and the council suspended parking charges, as we know, from the 26th of December. And I like to thank, take this opportunity to thank all the other group leaders and the Lord Provis for their agreement in doing this to see the benefit to the local communities and key workers. Any comments? Nope. Thank you for that. Next, please.
Item five, Covid-19 school transport retrofit fund. You are asked to note the contents of the agenda note and delegate authority to the Executive Director of City Development to administer the fund and distribute monies.
This is simply an agenda note to seek approval for distribution of funding from the Scottish government with regard to modification to vehicles. Council McCreedy, please.
Thank you very much, Kevina. I mean, I just have a question. I mean, obviously, I think this is welcome, but I suppose the question that does beg is, you know, is £27,000, how far is that going to go? What sort of, what sort of works is that going to go on? And, you know, how much of the of the school transport fleet will that, will that impact on? And so if we could just get a little bit more detail on that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Mr McNorton, do you have any details on that?
Yes, thank you, Kevina. The spend, it's a reimbursement exercise, really. So the measures were put in place as identified and this is a reimbursement from the Scottish government. But the spend on council school transport vehicles has been in the order of about £2,000, £3,000. So not a great cost. The type of installations, it's things like fixed hand sanitiser units and such like, which is really what the money's going on.
Okay, thank you for that. You okay, that? Council McCreedy.
That's fine, thanks.
Okay, thank you. You see, that's approved. Yep. Thank you very much. Next one, please, Tracy.
Item six, variation of waiting restrictions 2021. Your approval is requested.
This is, as I says in the tin, just a number of variations and amendments to the traffic regulations on the roads. I have Bailey McPherson, please.
Just a very brief comment, Kevina, just really to thank the officers. I had raised the issue in relation to refuse vehicles being unable to get down small lane at the east side of Minto Place and regularly problems for environment management in being able to service the bins of the households in Windsor Street who put their bins out to the back of the rear of their properties. I'm very, I had a site visit with waste management back when we had site visits, if you know what I mean, it was just pre-Covid. But I do have to say, I'm very grateful to the roads team for the fact that they took this up and the proposal before us tonight will help alleviate the problem. So grateful for that, Kevina. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the comments. I'm sure the team appreciate that. Council Duncan.
Thanks, Kevina. Just before we to post on record, my thanks to officers for the considerate manner in which they've dealt with the request for waiting restrictions at the funeral path or par within my wards. I mean, I think we all know that, you know, not everybody who asks for such restrictions can actually be accommodated. But I met with the staff, the funeral directors, and they explained that at what can be quite a stressful time for relatives, for obvious reasons, the last thing that they need is cars and considerable way blocking access for funeral parties. So really glad that that's been taken on board. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Nope, nothing so far. Okay, thank you for that. As agreed. Tracy, next one, please.
Kate, that takes us on to item seven, safe schools traffic management policy. You have a report before you.
Safer school streets policy establishes a policy to promote the provision of driving traffic regulations on the side of primary school entrances at the beginning and end of the school day. Again, I like to thank the members of the School Parking Working Group for their input into this report, because I think the number of schools recognised and as we progress through, we will see all our primary schools being made safer at the entrances for our children. So we have questions. Council Hunter, please.
Yes, Kevina, I just want to broadly support this report. And as you mentioned, and indeed Billy McPherson mentioned the night to me, the work of the School Parking Group, which I think has been a really important group over the last number of years to try and make sure that we keep our young people safe when they go to school. And I certainly note that the schools that have been highlighted here are the schools that we broadly said we felt should be a priority. And I want to thank officers for the work for putting this forward. And probably the last, one of the last bits of work the School Parking Group did before the pandemic was a visit to the North East Campus. And you know, so that is all the visits we've done at schools has done is open their eyes to something, some pretty terrible pieces of parking, et cetera, that are really putting our young people at risk. And I'm pleased to see that some of the suggestions that the Parking Group put forward on that site visit is in this report. And I think that's really welcome. I think it's important to highlight, you know, the vast, vast majority of parents, when they drop off their kids at school or pick them up, do it very responsibly, very safely. And, you know, I think that should certainly be highlighted. But what should also be highlighted is there's a minority of parents who certainly put young people at risk when they drop off and pick up kids from school and since the School Parking Group, all of us can probably give examples of things we've seen when we've done site visits that have horrified us. And, you know, touch wood, a young person hasn't had a serious accident on those visits when we've seen some appalling parking, et cetera. So I really welcome this report. And I think it's also appropriate to pay tribute, for example, to the Ealing Telegraph, which has done a lot of good work highlighting the work that the council have done to keep our young people safe. So I welcome this report. I look forward to seeing what the work in action, to see whether, what lessons we can learn to make sure we can keep our young people safe. But I really just want to thank officers for taking on board a lot of the things that the Parking Group have highlighted and asked for. It's in this report and hopefully we'll see that make, start making a difference to keeping our young people safe when they go to and from school. Hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, when we can get kids back to school, because I appreciate the moment, they're all obviously at home. But certainly I welcome the support and thank the officers.
No, thank you, Council Hunter. I think it's important, the priority, the safety of the children at the end of the day. And we've, you know, I did site visits with the head of transportation, think it's sort of all dangerous parking and driving around some of the schools. It's actually horrendous and touch wood, we have been very fortunate so far. So Billy McPherson, please.
Yeah, just the question really, Kevina, and I completely concur with everything Councilor Hunter has said there. We have indeed at the, at the working group discussed various schools, not just these ones actually, but various schools where there have been issues. I didn't actually know that we'd actually finalised them to five that have been highlighted here. But I think the reassurance I'm looking to for officers is that there will be, we will retain, we will continue to discuss the detail of these at the working group. I immediately see with regard to one, there will be an issue about public transport, buses going past the school campus. So there will definitely be issues going forward. And there will also be other, I mean, as continually highlighted, particular ones in the West End as well. There will be other sites that we will want to discuss as well. So this is really seeking assurances from officers that this is not really as such set in stone and that we will be prepared to discuss, one, the detail of these particular ones, but also possibilities in relation to other schools where parents and carers have highlighted issues and problems.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think the target is to actually do all the primary schools, but in small batches to actually ensure that you're getting done and learn from that as we move forward. And I think the input from the School Parking Working Group would be welcome. But I'll just let Mr McNorton come back and answer your question. Mr McNorton.
Yeah, thank you, Kevina. And answered Bailey McPherson's question, yes, it's certainly, we want to continue with the prioritisation basis led by the school, the School Parking and Pupil Safety Working Group. So that will be the main driver for prioritisation. The council officers will undertake assessments, but that will be done in conjunction with that working group.
Just appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. Council McCreedy, please.
Thank you very much, Kevina. I mean, I think I just want to welcome the report. I think it's, you know, I think as people have already said, including yourself, Kevina, I mean, I think, you know, all of us have probably seen some terrible things being done when folk are dropping off or picking up their children around their primary schools in our wards. I think it's important that we do take that safety of young people arriving at school and leaving school very seriously. I suppose, I think we kind of got there in the last one, but I suppose my question is, will there be some kind of report back to committee as well as to the working group? Because I think that's important and I think it's important that the working group continues its work. But while we, while we try and learn, because I was, I didn't ask a question on the fintry item, but I was, if I was going to have asked a question, it would have been, you know, will we look at this to see if it works? And if we think it needs tweaked or, you know, amended, that that will, that will happen. You know, and it will happen as quickly as officers and others are convinced that that's what, that's what's required. Thanks, Kevina.
Thanks, Council McCreedy. I think Mr McNorton answered that in the number eight for the fintry and did say a report would be come back and be a monitoring process. And I think we actually have to learn from this, because we might not get it right the first time, but we will certainly aim to make it as safe as possible for the children and make and find a solution. But I'll just let Mr McNorton come back and just confirm.
Yeah, thank you, Kevina. Yeah, it's correct. The intention is to report back biannually on the success or otherwise of these schemes. And again, we will have opportunity to both work with the School Parking and Pupil Safety Working Group to both design and monitor any amendments that we do need to have to these, to these sites in conjunction with headmasters and mistresses and such like as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Council McCreedy, is that okay for you?
Yeah, fine, thanks. So.
Yeah, thank you. Council Cordell, please.
Thank you, Chair. Like everyone else, I would certainly welcome this report. Anything that encourages safe travel to school, active travel to school has to be encouraged. But when I look at 4.4, and I don't want to rain, sorry, on the parade, but when we have a really good initiative like we do at Fort Hill Primary School, where we have that part-time vehicle prohibition, yet that remains one that's flouted by that small minority at the school that Council Hunter reflected on. And I know that will be, you know, the position at many schools, that a small minority that flout the rules around school. So I know we do go to schools and we do, you know, send out the parking enforcement team. But what more can we do about hammering home the educational message for those drivers that ultimately wouldn't require, you know, the enforcement team to go to these schools? Because driving would be at the level and the behavioural level that we would wish to see.
Thank you, Council Cordell. I think these orders will actually give the powers to the police to actually be more proactive in it. And I think that's important going forward, that the drivers, I hope, hopefully the children will teach the parents or their carers, whoever takes them to school, that it's safer to stay away. But I'll get Mr McNorton to come back.
Yeah, thank you, Kevina. You're entirely correct. The powers of enforcement will be with the Police Scotland. Currently, we do a scheduled rotational round of visits in conjunction with them on parking, particularly of council officers and Police Scotland. Aside from enforcement, as Councilor Cordell mentioned about the incentivising and the education side of it as well. The post, which is detailed in this report, will, in addition to delivering on the implementation of these schemes and going forward, they'll also do other work around the school travel, to do with the school travel policies and working with schools, doing campaigns, promotional activities and things like as well, to do the nudge side of it as well.
Thank you. I think that's part of the funded post from one of our supporting bodies is actually a benefit to actually highlight the importance of what this report's actually all about. And as I said, Council Cordell's correct, it'll actually hopefully encourage a lot more active travel and help with everyone's mental and physical health. Council Duncan, please.
Thanks, Kevina. Just a quick question to Mr McNorton. He and I had quite a useful telephone discussion the other day about this initiative in particular way with regards to ongoing parking problems at the eastern primary school in my ward, particularly Church Street. And I just really like his reassurance that, you know, as and when resources permit, that that particular problem area will be, it was considered to see if it's a viable candidate for this measure.
Thank you. Mr McNorton, just straight through there.
Yeah, thank you, Kevina. The eastern primary will be considered, it will be assessed by officers and it will be discussed at the pupil, the School Parking and Pupil Safety Working Group. As similar to eastern primary and a number of other primary schools, it is quite a complicated one. But once we've undertaken the assessment, we'll be able to report back and advise on a position for that, for whether or not it's suitable.
That's great. Thanks very much. I see no more questions or comments. I take this as approved. Thank you. Move on, Tracy, please.
Item eight was Fintry Primary School Part-Time Prohibition of Driving. That item has been dealt with. Item nine, disposal of surplus property, Dudup Castle. Again, you have a report before you.
Thank you. The item simply to update members of the market of Dudup Castle. I was noted in previous committees in 2016, which has been declared surplus. And surplus is quite a strange statement, but it's only a statement subject to conditions set out in the report. Officers admitted to ensure that the approach development sought to ensure the preservation of the historic building. And a further decision will be brought to and made by committee on any decisions to sell or lease the building in the future. Have any comments or questions? Can you have a second? Council Randall, please.
Thank you, Kevina. Yeah, so a comment first and then a couple of questions if I might. Firstly, just to comment, we're all aware that Dudup Castle stands as an important symbol of Dundee's history and heritage. And I'm confident that although it was unanimously agreed in 2016, before my time as an elected member, that it was surplus to our property requirements, it will continue to look proudly down on our city for many decades to come. I hope that as we start to look forward to bringing life back to our city after the dreadful past year, that a suitable buyer can be found for the castle, a keeper who will preserve its fabric.
I've lost Council Randall. I don't know anyone else.
Frozen.
I think she's on it. Yep.
Am I back?
Sorry, I lost you for a second there.
Okay, where did I get to? Did you hear my comment?
I'll just start from there again. It's okay. Go from there.
Go from the, start, start from the beginning, you mean?
Yeah, just go for it again.
Okay.
You just started.
Okay, it was just a comment that we're all aware Dudup Castle stands as an important symbol of Dundee's history and heritage. And I'm confident that although it was unanimously agreed in 2016, before my time as an elected member, that it's surplus to our property requirements, it will continue to look proudly down on our city for many decades to come. I hope that as we start to look forward to bringing life back to our city after the dreadful past year, that a suitable buyer can be found for the castle, a keeper who will preserve its fabric and its heritage. So having said that, a couple of questions for officers. Firstly, is there any reason why a community group which identifies suitable financial backing could not request that the castle is given as a community asset transfer? And the second question is, can I have an assurance and a reassurance that as stated in the report at 4.4, that the castle will continue to be properly heated, insured and maintained until such times as a buyer is found? And can I further ask if a buyer is found, that as stated in paragraphs 5.3 and 5.4, safeguards are put in place in any agreement with a buyer to ensure the integrity and history of the castle are preserved? Thank you.
So I agree with your comments, Council Randall, and it's in the report, so I'm quite sure they will be bound by that. But I'll pass you over to Mr Presswood to just give you a definitive answer.
Yeah, many thanks, Council Randall. And certainly don't disagree with any of the comments that you've made about the importance of Dudup Castle and our role as custodian. And the fact that the building is now surplus to council requirement, that doesn't obviate us of the need to identify a suitable future custodian. And so to answer the specific points that you made, yes, the council will continue maintaining and safeguarding the castle to ensure no deterioration of its condition until we can find a suitable partner. Yes, if any community, third sector or heritage group can access the funding to bring together a community asset transfer bid, we would certainly be very keen to speak to them. I know there has been some speculation in the media that national bodies such as Historic Environment Scotland or National Trust for Scotland may be interested. We will, of course, reach out to these bodies during the marketing period. We will, of course, reach out to these bodies during the marketing period to ensure that when we bring back the final report set out in paragraph 5.6, we will have chased every potential lead to find a suitable guardian for the building in the future. This report is very much about safeguarding of this historic gem. It isn't simply a property transaction, and I apologise if the committee report reads too much as though it's a mainstream property transaction. It's very much about how we secure the future of the castle going forward.
Thank you for that reassurance, Mr Presswood. And just finally, I think the Convenor mentioned it in his introduction, but just for the benefit of the general public, because there's clearly been a lot of speculation in the press recently, can you confirm again that should any offer be made on the property, we'd have to come back to city development for further consideration? And at that point, obviously, members, should they wish to, could support or move against the proposal?
Yes, I confirm that as set out in paragraph 5.6, any offers will be brought back to this committee for consideration. In addition, if there is any change of use, that would require a planning consent.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Consular Randall. I think you mentioned disposal, Consular Randall. I think I just in the 2016 report, if I'm correct, mentioned the sale or a long lease is what the disposal reference was made to, just for a confirmation. Billy McPherson, please.
Thanks indeed, Convena. I have a couple of questions. The first one actually comes from the Chair of the Friends of Dudup Park. Now Dudup Park's not in my ward, obviously is in yours, Convena. But it's only in your ward by the skin of its teeth, and as it happens, the Chair of the Friends lives just over the boundary in my ward. He has sent a very measured and I felt helpful feedback in relation to this. And he did ask about the feasibility in relation to a tourist attraction. I think we've slightly been there, and I think we do recognise that the castle is, which has been used obviously as office accommodation for some time, not just with ourselves, but previously with Abertay University. However, substantially, one question that he has asked, and I'd be grateful if officers would comment on, is assurances that should it fall into private ownership, that there will still be access to and through the grounds? And there will be no disadvantage to park users from the fact that the castle was no longer in the ownership of Dundee City Council.
Thank you for that. Mr Presswood, would you like to come back on that?
Yes, we have included a diagram showing the area of the potential disposal. And I hope that reassures members that all of the principal access arrangements and paths through the park should be unaffected. We would be happy to engage direct with Friends of Dudup Park to find out more about specific concerns, because that would allow us to highlight if there are specific issues as we start to speak to potential partners to take over the castle. And we would be able to highlight those areas of concern and make sure they're addressed before any disposal is brought back to committee.
That's very helpful, Mr Presswood. And I was going to make the point, they've actually asked for some engagement. So that's a very helpful offer. And my second question's unrelated to that, and actually you alluded to it a moment ago, Convena. And that is when we talk about the disposal of surplus property, I did want to make the point that disposal may not and should not simply be sale or nothing else. Now, I alluded a moment ago to the fact that for some considerable time, in fact, I remember going to many city centre beacon management meetings when the city centre was part of my ward at Dudup Castle, which Abertay was hosting during the time that they were leaseholders of, you know, within the castle. And I have actually, I should say, I do want to actually make this very clear by actually putting forward an amendment. I know this is not the time that other people want to ask questions so far, but there's a couple of points I want to make. I want an assurance from officers that you will consider both leases and sale. So that the advantage to me for leases is absolutely obvious. And that is we retain ownership of the castle going forward, but we have to see what's out there. And so I'm not suggesting that we don't put both possibilities forward. The other, so that's the reassurance I seek from officers. The other point, and Mr Presswood alluded to it a moment ago about 5.6, I feel that the recommendations should be quite clear in relation to both disposal and lease. So it's quite clear in the recommendations that we're looking for both, because it doesn't explicitly say that in the report. And also, I think we should explicitly say, actually in the recommendations, that any offers to purchase or lease would come back to committee. I think that's something that should really be within the recommendations, which I don't think either of these are massively controversial. But I would really much like to have these in terms of amended to the report. But going back to my question, I assume officers can confirm that they would consider a lease offer should one or more come forward?
As I said earlier on, that Consular Randall, Billy McPherson, disposal was sale or long lease, as mentioned in the 2016 report, but I'll just ask Mr Presswood just to confirm for you.
Certainly very happy to confirm that, and I'd be happy to ask the committee clerk just to minute that for the record in line with Billy McPherson's comment.
That's appreciated. I would just like to, not the time yet, I fully accept, I would just like to amend the recommendations. And you'll be able to see it in due course. Nothing massively controversial, but I think it helps make that position clear.
I'll come back to you in a few minutes, Billy.
Yeah, sure.
A few more questions, if that's okay. I've got, Consular McCready's also got an amendment as well, but I'll come back to him shortly as well. Consular Campbell, please.
Thank you, Convena. Can I just ask if an organisation, a community organisation, is looking to lease or, oh sorry, take it over as a community asset transfer? Or a business looking to buy or lease it, but both only under if you could get planning permission? Can they ask the council to take it forward and get planning permission? You know, they might not want to buy it or take it as a community asset if it wasn't going to, if they weren't going to be able to do what they want to do with it. Can they ask the council to take that forward and get planning permission in advance before? So they know that they'd be buying or otherwise?
Pass that straight to Mr Presswood, if that's okay.
I think theoretically that is possible, and as you all be aware, the council can be an applicant on applications. There was one of the last, the planning committee, which was certainly noteworthy. And I think it is important that any organisation seeking to take over the building should establish their bona fides, both in heritage terms as a custodian of the castle, but also importantly in financial terms. It is a large building. It has very significant annual running costs. We estimated them in 2016 at about £150,000 per year. And we've verified that over the past five years, it's been roughly £130,000 to £140,000 a year of typical running costs. I think I would be concerned if an organisation was seeking to take over the castle and wasn't able to afford the consultancy advice and the planning fee to lodge a planning application. But it does seem to me that it's therefore important that to demonstrate the bona fides of any prospective lessee or purchaser, and that they should take forward the process of confirming appropriate planning consent for whatever is proposed on the building.
Can I come in again, please, Convena?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for that, Robin. But assuming that the organisations could fulfil the criteria that you outlined, but that the property would be no use to them if planning permission wasn't given and they had invested in it. If you start, what would the process be if you'd established that they could fulfil financially the criteria you're looking for? And that they asked the council to take it forward for planning permission, and that they wouldn't take it on if that planning permission wasn't forthcoming? Would, if they had the money, would you look favourably on that? Who would make that decision to take it forward? Would that be city development?
At an officer level, as we said in the report, we would provide informal pre-application advice to the applicant. So we would test whatever is proposed against the local development plan. We would provide them with planning guidance. We would do that formally and in writing, so they're in a position to make an appropriate judgement as to the likely officer recommendation. But ultimately, planning will be a matter for elected members most likely on a major development such as this to consider.
Okay, Convena, can I?
Yeah.
Can I just point it forward now?
Yes, go ahead, Consular King. Yeah, King, I can't hear you. You switched, you're gone mute again. Yeah, King, you're on mute.
Sort it. Okay, I'm trying to sort it. Sorry about that. Convena, I've got some concern about the line of questioning from the Deputy Lord Provost. Really, for the point of view, it sets us up in the judge and jury of everything as a council. And I certainly wouldn't like to be in a position at the moment, oh, looking at any potential issue around planning as a conditional sale in any way. And I think it's wrong of us to continue to pursue this line of questioning. It is something perhaps that Consular Campbell could have taken up with officers offline. You know, I think it really sends a wrong message about what council was able to do in the interest of getting a few bob in, if that's the case. So I'm really against the line of questioning.
We won't go any further with it anyway.
It's legal standard.
Sorry, we won't go any further with that anyway. So that's fine. Deputy Lord Provost, if it's okay, just move on if that's okay.
I'm fine. It was only inquiring out of interest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just move on. I've got a few more questions and a few amendments, so I'll say no more questions on this one, if that's okay, because there's five questions have been asked. So Consular Hay, please.
Question, Convena?
Consular Hay, please.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with all that's been said before. I mean, Dudup Castle is such an important historical building for Dundee. What I really was looking for was an assurance really, to make sure that we don't rush into any sale or lease arrangement. And we take our time to make sure that any decision that we do take is is in the best interest of the castle and preserves its long-term future and in the interests of the people of Dundee.
I think basically that's been said a number of times by Mr Presswood and himself. I think that the heritage of the building will be looked at to be the priority. But I would say I'll bring Mr Presswood back in, if that's okay.
Yes, I'm happy to give that assurance. I anticipate that the marketing of an unusual building like this will take a minimum of six months, potentially more. We will then require a period of time for various services to be consulted and engaged in terms of potential tenants or purchasers of the building. We would then bring back a report to elected members, so there certainly will be no unseemly haste on behalf of officers. And we will make sure that the advice is fully formulated when we bring back our recommendations to you. And that will take a considerable period of time.
I think it's important to note there will be reports coming back if there's a sale or lease going forward on any planning application also. Consular Scott, please.
Yeah, I noticed that, I've heard what's said about planning guidance will be given to any possible end user of the site, and that there'll be pre-application discussion. But normally, when we're disposing of a property like this, it's accompanied with a site planning brief. And I'm thinking of in Bratley Ferry, when we sold the Old Eastern Primary School, which was a listed building. And that the council produced a site planning brief for that as to a guide as to what we thought would be acceptable use of the site. And I just wondered whether, why the same thought hasn't been given to this one?
Convena, there is high-level input from the planning service within the document before you. They are happy to provide more information to any prospective purchaser or lessee. It is such an unusual building that it is likely that there could be any number of different proposals coming forward, and it's impossible for us to anticipate them all. I think in the case of Eastern Primary, it was simply the conversion of an existing building. And it would be difficult, I think, to anticipate all the potential uses here. But the planning authority will be involved throughout to make sure that any proposals brought back to members are strong and credible and have the support of officers.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that. Consular McCready, I know you've been waiting with the amendment.
Yeah, sorry, Convena. I'm getting myself there. If the amendment could be shared, that would be helpful.
Tracy, is that possible, please? You just wanted to speak to it at the moment?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to it. I mean, essentially, my amendment is saying that we should note the contents of the report and seek further information prior to taking any further action. One, on two specific issues. One, around the council's future office requirements, particularly in light of the coronavirus pandemic. And also, the director has kind of spiked my guns on this one a little bit, but he has told us that we've spent several hundred thousand pounds on the property since we declared it surplus in 2016. So I wanted to get an idea of the expenditure on the property and also to look at allowing contacting organisations like the National Trust for Scotland, the Historic Environment Scotland, or any other heritage charity to see about the possibility of Dudup Castle being developed as a heritage attraction. So I think that would be helpful. So, I mean, if I just speak to it, the director a few moments ago apologised that the report reads as a property transaction and doesn't reflect the historic nature of Dudup Castle and its importance to the heritage of the city. I think actually what we are proposing, what my amendment proposes tonight, is to allow the director to sort that problem and to write a report that does reflect those things. I'm aware that the council decided in 2016 to declare Dudup Castle surplus to requirements. But since then, Children and Family Services Department was moved into the castle as well as, and the other thing is that that means that since 2016, as Mr Presswood has reported back to us on numerous occasions, the city development department's budget has essentially been wrong to the tune of something like £137,000 perhaps, because this saving was assumed in the budget. And indeed, as I said, we've spent hundreds of thousands of pounds on the property since we declared it surplus to requirements. And indeed, we did also spend, I think, the best part of a million pounds on it when it was returned from Abertay University. I understand that the report tells us that Dudup Castle is not best suited to being used as offices. And the report also tells us that one of its future uses could be as offices. So we better hope that any prospective tenants or owners don't read our reports. I think there is a serious issue though. I understand and, you know, happy to accept that Dudup Castle may not be the best offices for the 21st century as they are currently set up. But I do see in the context of the pandemic and life after it, that the council hasn't really had an opportunity to take a view on what the correct office space for the council of the future is. Clearly, I think we can predict that more people will work from home. But do we really think that hot desking is the way forward? I think one of the challenges that will go forward after the pandemic will be our wish to control infections and give people more space. So, you know, I'm not sure that hot desking and cramming people into Dundee House will be the way forward. And whether you think I'm right or not on that question, and clearly I'm not a professional on that. The question really tonight is, do you think that the council has thought about that enough? And have we, are we really in a position where we can say that we can dispose of office space without having some thought about that? I would also point out, as others have, that there is the historic nature of Dudup Castle. That I think we are, you know, we use this term often, that we are merely the custodians of it at this moment in time. But we have a duty to make sure that it is preserved for the future as best it can be. You know, as a historian, I would say that it isn't my period. But clearly, the association with the city of Dundee dates back hundreds of years. And the association with Bonny Dundee, amongst others, is surely worth thinking about and surely worth commemorating. So my amendment does call for the council to look at contacting heritage charities like the National Trust for Scotland and Historic Environment Scotland. I would remark, I think it's true to say that Dundee is the only local authority in Scotland, that the National Trust for Scotland does not operate a property. And I think that's something, you know, if they're really the National Trust for Scotland, why are they ignoring our great city? So I think we should certainly be contacting them. And I think we should certainly be looking to contact whether there are others, you know, that might be prepared to look at showcasing the important role that Dudup Castle has in the history of our city and indeed of our nation. And indeed, I think my amendment does allow for a community asset transfer. And I think that Dundee City Council should look to promote those more. And I think we are sometimes a bit tardy in promoting those. Essentially, as I was going to say, that there's been no, there's no rush. Essentially, as I was going to say, that there's been no, there's no rush here since it's taken us five years to get to this point, since we said that the building was surplus to requirements. And I think that, you know, there's also, I would, I would suggest the likelihood of a depressed property market in the near future. And indeed, the director has just said that marketing would take at least six months. So I don't think there's any great rush here. And I think my amendment seeks more information so that the committee can make an informed decision about the future of Dudop Castle. I, I think we should be able to agree that, Convenor, and I hope he will consider agreeing that. And on that basis, I move the amendment in my name, thanks.
Thank you. On reading it, I certainly don't have any objection to section C. Section B, I've no idea what officer requirements will be in light of any coronavirus pandemic, and no one does. Currently, we don't need Dudop House, Dudop Castle, sorry, at the moment. So I wouldn't be making any comment on that. A, I will not be accepting 21A as a recommendation at all. I think we need to take action, we just need to move on. It was agreed in 2016 and we need to get this resolved. So I'll let Mr Councillor Mara, I think, who wants to second you. Sorry, Councillor Mara, you're muted at the moment. No comment there.
Thanks, Convenor. And yeah, I'm happy to second councillor McCready. I think, I think maybe the kind of the range of questions from, from members of the administration on, on this proposal tonight maybe illustrates that it would be wise, I think, to try and to take this back and take no action at this point and to look again at what the possibilities are. And I do sense that there's a recurring theme coming up, not just in this evening, but in terms of the last set of meetings that we had, talking about the disposal of properties. We seem to be working under one assumption about what a post-pandemic Dundee is going to look like. And that, and it's probably one reasonable assumption is that there's going to be less money. But that seems to be the position that's driving our decisions. Rather than thinking about the social need of the people of the city, what is the actual, the fabric that we're going to have to provide for them? So we've talked about that in relation to schools, we've had previous discussions about this in terms of the, the property market and the commercial property market. And I think that this is another example, Convenor, in terms of we haven't really begun to work through the actual needs of the city. Now, this is no, as you put, kind of no new debate. And it doesn't just go back to 2016. I'm aware, having read family papers frankly, that my great grandfather was talking about the use of Dudop Castle when he was standing for the Labour Party in 1920. You know, so it's actually, what, how do we preserve this as an asset that can be best used for the people of the city? And how can we make sure that it serves the future purposes of the city as well as preserving our heritage? So I think that, given the number of questions that have been asked, the concerns that have been raised by people of all parties so far, I think it would be sensible to take the action that councillor McCready is proposing here. Thinking more strategically about what we require and putting a pause on this for the moment.
Thank you for your comments, but overall, I think most of the questions, I think all of the questions will be clearly answered by Mr Presswood. And I think all the assurances are within the report. Can maybe bring Mr Presswood in to actually make comment, any answer to the question with regards to section C of that recommendation? And possibly B if he wishes to.
Very happy to comment particularly on, on recommendation C. We will certainly reach out to any recognised heritage body that may have an interest in the castle. We will try and draw it to their attention. We are happy to receive responses from any community organisation that would be interested in taking it over. And it is very clear that the financial challenges facing the council face many public sector organisations. Crucially, face important organisations such as National Trust for Scotland, who as I think members will be aware, I think, had a recent round of redundancies and have been very negatively impacted by COVID-19. I did check the National Trust for Scotland website just to understand what their appetite for acquisitions is. And historically, National Trust for Scotland used to ask for a dowry when they took on a historic building and they would only take on a very limited range of listed buildings. But they also used to ask for a dowry to cover future running costs, so I wanted to check whether that was still the case. And now, the guidance on their website states that the property should be capable of covering its own running costs. So not just a one-off dowry, they need to see an income stream linked to any specific property in order for them to take it on. So we are very happy to engage with National Trust for Scotland, with Historic Environment Scotland, with any other recognised groupings to explore that issue further. But I do not anticipate that there is any public or heritage body which is going to be in a position to immediately jump at the opportunity to take this one on, unless the council is prepared to offer financial indemnities, either one-off or recurring, to support them in, in, in taking the building on. So we will explore this, we will report back as part of the future report that we've detailed in this report on the outcome. And I'm more than happy to provide briefings to members as those discussions proceed. But it's important that we don't simply defer a decision on the hope that someone will come along and take this on and turn it into a visitor attraction, because in the current climate, I think that is challenging. I wouldn't say it's impossible, but I would say it's very challenging. And the one thing I would like to emphasise, and a number of members have touched on this tonight, is that leaving a building vacant, even if we continue with security and heating against frost etcetera, will inevitably result in deterioration of the building, because there's no one around to things and to ensure that damage is corrected immediately. So it is important to find a new use for this building as quickly as possible. But we're very happy to engage with any legitimate bodies that would be interested in taking the building on. And we will proactively speak out to those that councillor McCready has mentioned in his motion.
Thank you, Mr Presswood, and I hope that helps members understand the situation a bit better. Can I also bring in the chief executive to maybe comment on 2B, the recommendation that's been proposed, please?
Thanks, Convenor, just two seconds, I'm just having some IT challenges as well. In terms of recommendation 2B, I think at this moment in time, it's officers' view that we would have sufficient accommodation through the council's current accommodation, particularly with the improvements that are currently still taking place at the West Office and indeed Clever House. I think it's also the view of officers that while Dudop Castle is quite likely, as being pointed out today, has some historic purposes as an office environment, it's quite challenging. And examples of that are things around like ventilation. So it's the view certainly when it's been discussed at management team, that the actions and the recommendations within the report are something that officers are keen to implement for the reasons that Mr Presswood has outlined. It is something that we will look at going forward, and it has been raised previously about when we fully understand the impact of COVID-19. And anecdotally, what staff are telling us is that they will like to work from home. And that might not be on a permanent basis, but it might be more on a phased basis going forward, on a rotational basis. But certainly the safety and wellbeing of the staff will be something that we will continually look at to make sure that we don't have people working in an environment that's not safe for them to do so. But at this moment in time, our view remains that we would have sufficient accommodation within the council accommodation stock currently to be able to do that. And it's something that I'd be happy to report back to committee at a further point.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan, you have a question for the chief executive, I see.
Yeah, just that I was under the understanding that Clever House was declared surplus around about the same time as Dudop Castle may have been. Albeit, you know, it's, it's no one that would, would spend millions of pounds on, like this one.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor, Bailey Keenan's correct, Clever House was a building that the decision was taken back, back in 2016. And I think that's been previously discussed in previous city development meetings with regard to why there's been a delay there. And that's something that is still under review by officers and will feature in any further report that we bring back about ensuring we've got the correct accommodation to allow council services to operate going forward. And once we're also able to establish further impact that COVID-19 might have. But the review still remains that Dudop Castle is not an office environment that we see within the ongoing portfolio of our stock and accommodation as which is reflected within the recommendations contained within Mr Presswood's report.
That's the supplementary, Convenor. Just to clarify whether, whether Clever House, having been declared that surplus at that time, continues to be a burden like Dudop Castle appears to have been pointed out by councillor McCready to the city development budget.
So thanks, Convenor, I'll let Mr Presswood come in with the detail on this, but I do believe this has been covered at previous city development committees, where it's been explained that the rationale and delay in exiting Clever House was a result of accommodation in Dundee House being let and an income source being secured for that. So there has not been an impact on the budget with respects to that. I'm not sure if Mr Presswood wants to come in any further with regard to that or has more detail that may answer Bailey Keenan's question further.
Convenor, I'm happy to take it up offline.
If you could, that would be beneficial, because it's a different site. Councillor McCready, I think you would like to come back in.
No, I mean, I just welcome the officers' contributions, which I think made my point very eloquently, and I hope that everyone will support me.
Well, I tend to disagree, so I'll not be taking on board the amendment, so I think we'll just go to the vote, if that's okay. Tracey, please.
First of all, you'll need a second, Convenor.
Oh, sorry, can I have a second, please? We'll just do, we'll do your amendment after Bill McPherson, if that's okay.
I'll second you, Convenor. To make a comment in relation to the amendment is actually before us, Convenor, not to move the amendment.
Sorry.
If I may before.
Go ahead, please.
Right, the point I would make, and I think the officers have tried their best tonight, and I think I've made a reasonable fist of it in terms of the points that councillor McCready makes at points B and C. The, the point I would make in relation to A, and the reason that we will, we will not support this, is that you can only, you can only, you can't continue to kick the can down the road. The building will continue to deteriorate and it's empty, there will be security costs and so on. And the point I would make tonight is that, I mean, my main concern is that leases being actively considered as an option as well as sale and, and that we get clarity in relation to the final decision being taken in relation to what comes back.
Is it the reason I'm asking that? Oh, sorry, sorry, Deputy Lord Provost, I think your microphone is on there, sorry. Sorry, Bill McPherson.
If I can continue, and, and the point is this, we are not making a final decision tonight, we are simply going out to find out what interest there is out there. And I don't think we can, it is reasonable really to just say, because there's questions asked at B and C, which I think the officers have really tried their best to answer, that we can just put the whole thing on hold and see the castle deteriorate further. So for that reason, I just can't support the, the point at A.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Bill McPherson. I'm sorry, Tracey, can we maybe just go to the vote, please? Can I ask for a second, please, sorry?
I'm happy to second you, Convenor.
Thank you for that. Okay, Tracey.
Okay, so the motion by Convenor, seconded by councillor Alexander, is approval of the report. Amendment by councillor McCready, seconded by councillor Mara, is as circulated. Convenor.
Motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Motion.
Councillor Caddell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Councillor Ross.
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor McCready.
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Mara.
Amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
Amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Councillor Hay.
Amendment.
Councillor Scott.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
No vote.
Councillor Duncan.
No vote.
Councillor Murray.
Motion.
There are 15 votes for the motion, 11 votes for the amendment, the motion is carried at this point.
Thank you very much. Bailey McPherson, your amendment?
Yeah, if, if officers could be so kind as to circulate that, it's, it's pretty, largely technical. And that is that I feel that the, the recommendations should explicitly, as I have alluded to, make clear that the marketing of the subjects for disposal or lease should be indicated in the, in the recommendations. And I know what Mr Presswood said in relation to 5.6, but again, I think it is important that we say in the recommendations that the head of design and property will bring back to committee detail of any off, because at the end of the day, we are agreeing to the recommendations. And therefore, the recommendation should make clear that lease is an option and the recommendation should make clear that no decision will be taken on sale or lease without it coming back to committee. So for that reason, I move my amendment, Convenor.
Okay, thank you very much for that, I'll just leave off for a few minutes, just so that members can see it and read it. Okay, Tracey, can we take that down, please, I think that's long enough. Yeah, I'm quite happy to take on board, Bill McPherson. I don't see any reason why we can't put that on there for sale or lease, I think it's quite clear. And we're, just clarifies in the reports, but so I'm quite happy to take that, if you're happy to just move that one.
Happy with that, thank you.
Thank you, I'm just, I'm sorry, somebody's got a comment. Sorry, can I, I've got, councillor Duncan, he wants to second you.
Convenor, in light of what you've just said, I'll be briefing just formally state, you know, for, for the record, I second Bailey McPherson.
Thank you, appreciate it, I'm sorry I missed you, I've got IT problems myself tonight. Councillor Alexander.
That was just to say the same thing, I think that's a helpful suggestion and makes abundantly clear that there is additional measures in place to, to make sure that committee gets the final say on that, so helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that, I think that's, I think that's approved with the amendments, thank you. Next, Tracey, please.
That takes us on to item 10, surface water drainage brownfield sites, this is for noting.
This report falls on a request by members of the development committee held in October 2020 for the briefing report to be prepared. And it highlights the importance of demonstrates that the council is committed to working with Scottish Water to go forward with developing our brownfield sites. Councillor Short, I see you've got a question.
And yes, Convenor, it feels hard to believe now that it was just about a year ago we were all invited to the steeple for Dundee and Angus Chamber of Commerce and Dundee City Council joint production, which I think actually councillor Flynn, you introduced, which was the Dundee Construction Sector event. There was lots of discussions around working with the council and business to develop the city further. And Scottish Water were there on the day and there was quite a bit of discussion around what Scottish Water can do and how it depended on the level and size of the developer within the city. I think this report should be welcomed as I think it makes it very clear that there's a much stronger partnership there, which is something that's been looked for for a long time. But I'm just really interested to hear from the executive director how we can go back now. And I'm not being facetious, but I'm guessing that it's not everybody's, every developer's Monday night delight to sit here and listen to our committee. So how will you go back to that wider development community and explain how? how we have changed the function and just advertise it essentially, especially in this COVID environment, when your teams are busy helping support businesses with grants and things.
Okay, councillor Short. And yes, the construction event was a very productive event and Scottish Water were very keen to get communication started and reinforced with the council. So, Mr. Presswood, answer the question.
Thank you, Convenor, and thank you councillor Short for a helpful question. And I suppose my normal response would have been to say that perhaps we would put it on the agenda for this year's Construction Sector Forum, but at the moment, given the pressures on the team, as councillor Short's highlighted, we aren't planning to have one this year. But what we can do, following up from the helpful suggestion, is to arrange to communicate directly with all the developers on our mailing list, just so they're aware of the work that's been done and what we hope is an improving partnership with Scottish Water. And just reminding them of the escalation routes that exist in the event that they can't deal with surface water drainage issues through their ordinary day-to-day contacts. So we'll certainly follow that up and make sure that we communicate direct with all the developers that we're in contact with.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Sorry, can I just ask, the partnership was obviously originally with the Chamber of Commerce. Will there be discussions with them as well, Mr. Presswood?
Yeah, we'll certainly arrange to raise it with the chamber as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan?
Convenor, you know, for suggesting that we're going out to have a conversation with developers, then, you know, I think it'd be useful if we were going out with an indication of what sort of price we'd be looking for in some of these sites. You know, there's a wide range of prices that we receive for sites and I wouldn't like to see them disposed of and developers land banking them. So I think it's really important that city development get the maximum amount of money for these brownfield sites before they will open them up the way we have done. You know, up to now, I haven't seen great prices coming. And I would like to see them a bit better. So perhaps the city development department can take that comment into account moving forward, or perhaps even give me some advice how they attend to achieve maximum value now it will be now open these sites up.
Yeah, but, Mr. Presswood?
Yeah, happy to provide a briefing offline. I certainly share councillor Keenan's aspiration to make sure that we maximise receipts for council-owned assets. Obviously, not all of these sites are in council ownership, but a significant number of them are. And we wish to stimulate brownfield development, but we also wish to ensure that we secure our statutory duty to get best value over these sites. I'm happy to pick that up offline.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments, questions? I don't see any, so we'll just take that as approved. Thank you. Can we move on, Tracy, please?
Okay, that takes us on to item 11, waterfront place update and interactive park tender. You're asked to note progress and approve the tender.
As it says, we're just looking for an update. This is an update to what's happened on waterfront place and an update with regards to the design stages we are actually at and the final stages. And seemingly coming soon. Any comments or questions? None. Okay, thank you. We'll take that as approved. Thank you. Next, please.
Item 12, supply of plant and vehicles. Again, your approval is requested.
Again, it's just a replacement, old vehicles, end of life. Any questions, comments? Nope. Take that as approved. Thank you. Next, please.
Item 13, supply of zero emission vehicles. Again, your approval is requested.
Again, it's just now a supply of low carbon vehicles for the, and help the environment within the city and improve the fleet. Any questions? I don't see any. As approved. Thank you.
Item 14, tenders received by head designer property. Your approval is requested.
Taking approval for except two tenders, one for Dundee House and one for electric pop-up chargers. Councillor McCready, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Convenor. I've got a question on the tender for Dundee House. I see that we're talking about spending, I think, £350,000. Can I ask just for clarity on why the council is paying for that repair, given that we do not own the property? And I understand that might be about the terms of the lease that we've currently entered into. But if that is also the case, why is an insurer or the builder, you know, builder not paying for a mistake that was made in the, as I understand it, during the building phase of Dundee House? And just seek some reassurance from officers that they are, they have been convinced that the sale and leaseback of Dundee House represents best val, represents value for money for the Dundee City Council taxpayer.
Mr. Presswood, would you like to take that one?
Yeah, certainly happy to address the issue around the liability for the pipework replacement. I confirm that this is to replace pipework was installed per the original design. So we have checked, we have consulted with legal colleagues and there is no liability which can be traced back to the original designer for this. And so we need to accept that it does require upgrading. I think members are aware of the background and why it requires upgrading. But, and also in terms of the lease, it's a standard full repairing and ensuring lease, so we are liable. I think we rehearsed this when we discussed the leaky roof on Dundee House. We are liable for repairs to the building. In terms of the business case for the sale and leaseback arrangement, I think that was led through the Policy and Resources Committee. I wasn't directly involved in it, but I think it was very clear that guidance was given to members that it represented best value at that time and assisted the council with its treasury management and debt management functions. I'm not sure whether Mr. Colgan would like to come in or Mr. Flight. But certainly there was a very clear, strong recommendation given to members at this time. And there's nothing in this report which changes that original recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Presswood. Thank you for the call correctly, P and R, that was passed unanimously. So councillor McCree, you want to come back? Are you happy with that?
No, I'm happy with the response that I received. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else? Don't see any, so take that as approved. Thank you very much. Tracy?
That takes us on to the confidential items on the agenda. You may wish to deal with these in the usual manner.
We're in agreement. There's no one objecting, so thank you very much. We'll take that as city development's all approved. And that's the business for city development tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Convenor. The next committee is the Policy and Resources Committee. Good evening, colleagues. We'll just get straight on with the business. Tracy?
First item is declaration of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest?
Are there any declarations at this stage? Councillor Dawson?
Thanks, Convenor, just in relation to item six, if I recall, because I'm on board of pleasure and culture.
Okay, we'll take that for the other members of LACD as well. And I think, Michael, you were about to say the same thing, I presume?
I was, thank you.
And thank you for that. Any others? Nope.
Me too.
Okay. Oh, Christina, of course, council ten, item two. Perfect, thank you. That is noted. Okay, Tracy, back to the agenda.
That takes us on to item two, housing HRA revenue budget 2021-2024 and review of rent and other housing charges for 2021-2022. You have a report before you.
I'll keep my comments brief as the report is self-explanatory, but I think it's important to highlight a couple of things. Firstly, how difficult I suppose this consultation has been in comparison to any other year we've carried out because of the impact of COVID-19. And I'd really like to thank staff for the way in which they've engaged with many of our tenants. And as you can see from the appendix on page 11, big page 11, 2,162 of our tenants have engaged in this process. And I think that's outstanding, given the circumstances. And I really like to commend staff who have been part of that. I think it's also important to highlight the results. Clearly, the majority of tenants have gone for option one, which is an increase of 1.5%. But I think it's quite significant that 46%, very close to that 50% mark, have voted for a higher increase. And I think that probably stems from the important work that's been undertaken in previous years to address fuel poverty and some of the challenges they face in the investment that we've seen throughout our housing stock and how well received that's been. Initially, where it was perhaps more difficult to persuade people to take on things like, for example, external wall insulation. Now we have communities actively lobbying for this type of investment. So, you know, I think that's really positive in itself. And you'll also see from the contents of the report that the budget being, that we're being asked to improve, approve, should I say, includes an increase of capital financing costs, which will support investment of more than £118 million over the next five years. Again, not an insignificant sum by any means. And with that, I'll just invite comment or question. So councillor Rendall?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. It was just really to agree with your comments regarding the consultation, because doing a consultation and getting, you know, comments back and feedback at any time is difficult. And people, you know, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't, because people say, I never had my say on that. And you say, well, we did a consultation. Well, they're a waste of time. Well, you know, if you're not in it, then you can't say anything. But the staff certainly went above and beyond, you know, asking people if they'd be happy to take part in something when we were maybe doing a repair or talking to them on the phone about something else. So I think the fact that we've managed to just about get to the same level as last year is to be commended. I just want to add my thanks to yours to all the staff that took part in that. Thank you. And of course, all the people that gave their feedback. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your comments. I see no other comments or questions at this point, so I will take silence as agreement. Okay, thank you very much.
That takes us on to three, COVID-19 discretionary grant. You have a report for noting and approval.
Again, hopefully this is self-explanatory. You know, officers have been working incredibly hard to ensure that as much of the resource that we've been provided either directly or vicariously has been given to the businesses in the city that require it the most. This discretionary scheme clearly sets out how officers will ensure that this finance is provided to companies based in the city. I'll just invite comments. So first of all, councillor Bailey Keenan, you have a question.
Thanks, Convenor. Convenor, I think the report's to be welcomed. And, you know, what's most to be welcomed about it is the recognition for government that there's £5 million coming in the direction for administration costs. Which really leads me to the real question, that being, we've made a lot of representations because, you know, that's the first of grants where I've seen money coming in our direction for the administration of grants that we've carried out. We've done quite a few of them now, several million in business support grants. And, you know, some of these would have taken up an enormous amount of time from officers as we've done that. And I'm just wondering, you know, what five million over the 32 local authorities actually means in financial terms to the city? And of course, where in relation to the lobbying that we've done via COSLA leaders that you could perhaps give one? And, you know, obviously, we asked the former chief executive to deal with that through COVID. How has that been taken up by Mr. Colgan moving that forward through his good office?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Bailey Keenan. You're right to recognise that point. It's really important that we continue to make representations for as much resource and support as we possibly can. As you know, through the updates that we've provided through the leaders meeting, but also on comment at previous committees, those discussions are continuing through COSLA. I do have COSLA leaders on Friday afternoon, and I'm hoping there will be some further updates from the finance spokesperson for COSLA during the course of that meeting. But also, as you rightly mentioned, there has also been extensive discussion and lobbying through officer working groups as well. And I'll just invite the chief executive to add his thoughts on your question. So Greg?
Thanks, Convenor, and thanks, Bailey Keenan. So just in terms of your first question, I don't have the exact distribution at the moment for the five million, but what I'm happy to do is speak to officers and circulate that to all members of the Policy and Resources Committee. My understanding is that it's going to be allocated on the number of businesses that are within each local authority, but I'll confirm that in detail and let you know. And I think it's also important to know that the five million was an initial allocation. And my understanding is it's likely to be higher than that with regard to reflecting the further grant schemes that are being implemented, and some of which have been managed by local authority, like the taxi fund, which went live at the end of last week. So I'll come back to elected members with the information that you've asked for. In terms of that wider representation, that obviously continues. You know, we, at every opportunity, whether it's through directors of finance or indeed through Solis and through any communications we're having with Scottish Government, are emphasising the impact that COVID-19 has had on the city and also the requirement for additional funding. So just to give members that assurance that it's something that I have picked up from David and will continue to make that representation for funding relating to COVID-19 and the response that the council's made at any opportunity that presents itself to me.
Thanks, Greg. And we'll make sure that information is circulated round all members. And if I receive any update on Friday that is particularly helpful in reference to your question, Bailey Keenan, I'm happy to circulate that round members as well. Do you have a supplementary?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Bailey McPherson?
Hi, thanks, Convenor. Grateful to you. My point in relation to these discretionary grants is that they are welcome insofar as they go. And what I mean by that is this, if I can give you a very specific example of a constituent of mine who had pre-COVID, a very thriving and well-managed business of longstanding, but has been unable to access any funding other than furloughing staff. In terms of keeping the remainder of the business open, the business has been unable to operate since March of last year, given the nature of the business that he operates. Now, he's actually, he will benefit from this and he's grateful for the fact that he will benefit from this. In 512B1, he's one of the businesses within the categories that officers, and I'm grateful to officers for recognising that type of category will be supported. But just to give you the measure of how much this will not, will barely touch the sides. Businesses in that category will get a one-off payment of £2,000 per business. He tells me that that will meet his overheads, rent rates, other overheads for four weeks. He's been unable to operate for the best part of a year. So this isn't the council's fault. And I think the officers have done well in relation to what they've done in terms of looking at the areas of this for this discretionary fund. So there's no complaint about the way the council is operating this. But what is bluntly clear is that £525,000 does not go the full way by any means. And that's a central government issue, as I'm sure we would agree. So I'm grateful that you will be continuing the representation at COSLA leaders, because I think there's a long way to go. Business has really struggled, as we all know, over the past year. And I really do think this whilst welcome is, should not be the whole story.
Thanks for your comment, Bailey McPherson. And I think I know exactly which constituent you are referring to. They have been very proactive in terms of their engagement. But your point is well made. And I think if we had 10 times the resource, we could still push that out the door and require more. And, you know, the gravity of the situation facing businesses in particular is something that I'm always acutely aware of and take forward in the conversations that I have with the Cabinet Secretary for Finance and others. Clearly, there are some parameters, some restrictions, I suppose, both in terms of how we deal with any announcements come forward, but also for Scottish government. But it's really important that the voices of those individual businesses and those particular instances where we can see that a business type, for example, has fallen between the cracks, we make sure that is raised at the highest levels to ensure that they try to address it fundamentally. So absolutely hear you. And as I've said, I will continue to lobby for as much resource as the city, the businesses in the city require going forward as well. So thanks for your comments there. Councillor Short?
Thank you. As this is coming to tonight's committee, I wanted to take an opportunity to thank officers who, up to this point for nearly a year now, have dealt with so many inquiries and have been so keen to support where they can and also be so reactive to what is very much a change in scene. And also, just to find out, certainly, I find more and more that the wider partnership has become something that's been quite important. And certainly, when I've, when I've spoken to officers, the recommendation has been to go out to business gateway and some businesses are experiencing support that they've never had before. Is that something that has changed? And we'll be looking forward to strengthening some of the partnerships that have appeared because of what's happened? I'm trying to get positive out of a negative as always.
No, I think there is much actually, and, you know, the way in which the, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and other organisations have worked in tandem with the council over the last 10 months has been incredibly important. And obviously, there has been representations made by others as well to make sure that there is some addressment of those issues. So I think it's an important point, those partnerships. So I think it's an important point. Those partnerships apply not just in the third sector, where we've seen that massive support of all of those organisations coming together to feed those that require it and clothe them, as we were discussing earlier, but also for the business community. And I think we'll probably use much of the learning in the last 10 months across the whole council, particularly in economic development as well. But, Robin, I don't know if there's anything you want to say in response to that particular point, because I think the hard work and dedication, not only of teams within City Development, but of course, within finance, has been notable. And I think we all want to put that, thanks, on record. Robin?
Yeah, it's very kind of councillor Short to mention that. Rory Young, who leads the business development team, is on the call tonight, in case anyone has detailed questions about the scheme. And Rory has been working closely, as you say, with colleagues from finance, from customer services to administer the various grant schemes. They've all gone above and beyond the call of duty. And we have relied on the very close relationships with Business Gateway, with the Chamber of Commerce, the Fair Work and Enterprise Board, to make sure that there's full information shared with all different parts of the business community. So insofar as such a national crisis can be considered a success story, I think the financial support, whilst, as you say, it would always be great to go further, it has been administered very effectively within the city.
Thanks very much, Robin. Okay, and see no further questions, so I will take this item as agreed, unless anyone tells me otherwise. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you.
Item four, financial outlook and revenue budget 2021-2022. You have a report before you.
Again, detailed report that sets out the financial outlook and the challenge ahead, I suppose. We did discuss at length, I think, a number of aspects of this at the last P and R committee and obviously agreed an approach in terms of making further representations. And we await responses to some of them, and we'll ensure that any response is circulated around the full committee. Councillor Duncan?
Thanks, Convena. I'd just like to draw attention to page 22, under the heading Local Government Finance Trends 2013 to 2021, and particularly the very last paragraph on that page, which tells of declining funding per head of population for local governments. Certainly, I would have appreciated figures, specific figures, as to how this relates to Dundee. I mean, have we been, you know, worse hit than others? You know, have we fared better than others? It doesn't actually tell us anything, and I'd like to know actually what's behind that.
Thanks, councillor Duncan. We will have that figure. I've seen the graph, which provides a breakdown of all 32 local authorities. I think if memory serves me correctly, but I'll ask officers to either give you the exact amount on this call or perhaps an email following it. But we are in the lower amounts in terms of the position that we face. So in comparison to some councils, we are slightly better off, but we're all very acutely aware of the challenge that we've faced over the last kind of decade and will continue to face going forward as well. But Greg, do you have a specific number to hand? And if not, we'll make sure it's circulated afterwards.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. So I don't have the specific number to hand from the spice briefing, which is noted within 7.1 of the report, but I'm happy to circulate that to members of the committee tomorrow.
Thanks very much.
Thanks very much for that.
Okay, thank you, councillor Duncan. And I think it's important, you know, we're all acutely aware of the finances. And I was reading an article three days ago on the BBC around English councils battling financial ruin. And that's clearly not what we want to be facing in any way, shape or form, but clearly illustrates the scale of the challenge facing local government. And we need to try and make our voice heard very clearly at all levels. So I see no other questions or comments on that. So I will take this report as agreed. Thank you very much. Move on.
That takes us to item five, which is the risk management annual report.
Again, this is the annual update, self-explanatory. Is there any questions or comments on this? Nope. Okay, can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much. Tracy?
We now move on to the final item on the agenda, which is a confidential item. Do you wish to take this in the usual manner?
Okay, councillor Mara has a question on this. So at this stage, can I ask all members of the press and public to please vacate the call? And then we'll go to this item so that councillor Mara can ask his question on the private sector section of the agenda. Thank you. We'll just wait a couple of minutes while that happens.